I want to tell you about some of the people I swim with that maybe you guys might forget. But I want to make it known to you that the oldest member of our group is 95 years old. They come every day to swim with us. Another lady that we swim with is hearing impaired. I wanted to bring her today, but I cannot sign, so I could not have her talk to you folks. Maybe you might consider that one time, getting a signer, and then maybe I could bring her. She comes all the time to do her laps. She communicates with us. She will wave and what have you, and she just has the best time. She brings the biggest float that looks like a doughnut from Dunkin' Donuts. It is so great. And after she does her laps, she just lays around and just relaxes. One other fellow that we swim with, he has prosthetic legs. He rides a bicycle to get to the pool. And then he takes his legs off, gets in the pool, and does his laps. He is marvelous. These are the heroes of Palm Coast. These are the people that you want the younger generation to emulate. And I want to thank you for the pool, and I want to thank you for Ms. Alley over there. She is marvelous. Ms. Kim also, and Mr. James before that. I have to tell you, we're very blessed to have them. And I just want you guys to know, we need the pool open for 12 months. If you guys could do it, it would help all of us out, and I just want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker, please?
Mayor, if I may, just quickly in response to the last speaker's comments.
Helen.
If you would like to bring your friend that's hearing impaired, just give the clerk notice prior to the meeting. I think, what is it, 48 hours? 48 hours prior to the meeting, and we can make sure that she has the assistance she needs to be able to understand what's going on. You just have to give notice and we can...
When I see her next time, I will ask her if she will come with us, and you would be able to print. That would be wonderful.
Just give us some notice so we can get someone in, and you can contact Ms. Smith.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good thought, thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mike Cochiola, Palm Coast. First issue is the proposed raise in the pay or the stipend to the council. I am complete agreement that you are underpaid and overworked. I really do. It's not easy running a city of any kind, and this is a growing city. So you do absolutely deserve more compensation for your time, because your time is worth more now than it was 20 years ago when the council first started, or whatever the number was. But I think you ought to look carefully at what other cities this size are paying their council persons, and use that as your guide. Because right now, when it's published that you're looking for a 365 percent increase, that doesn't, maybe, it just doesn't go well in the community. I think it would be better to look at what other cities do and propose that. And I know as a citizen, I'm willing to pay for it. Okay? Second thing, you're going to be selecting an interim city council person. And I urge you carefully to select, carefully to select a person who is calm in demeanor, who knows the city, who will debate, who will seek consensus. Because you're going along okay now. You've really improved as a council over the past several months. And I think you need to keep that going with the right kind of person sitting in the interim seat and then other than that, then the voters will decide what they want. But it's great to see the council working the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I really hate to do this, stir up a hornet's nest, but some things just have to be done. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had multiple conversations and multiple arguments and discussions about the money being spent at the Green Lion. Well, I sat down the other night, and I crunched some numbers. And please correct me if I'm wrong. We, the city, are paying $3,400, $3,500 a month in expenses because we own the Green Lion Inn. Well, that's wrong. And then it came out in public that we're only receiving $600 a month. Well, I went to school a long time ago, but when I went to school, the difference between 6 and 34 was 28. So we, the city, all of us, are paying $2,800 a month for something that, when we go there, we still have to pay. So I'm officially requesting to get a breakdown, dollar for dollar, penny for penny, how much it's costing all of us to say that we own the Green Lion Inn, or we're paying bills that should be being paid by the Green Lion Inn. So, and I'd also like the city to provide to me a list of, not all the businesses, but businesses that are similar, restaurants, bars, golf courses, anything that they have to pay. And I want to make sure that the owners of those venues, they're paying what they're supposed to be paying, and we're paying what we need to pay. That's all I'm asking. I don't want to stir up a pot of soup, but when I heard these numbers the other day, and I said, "It's costing the taxpayers of Palm Coast $2,800 a month." And I want also to know how long we've been paying that $2,800, and how much longer we have to pay the $2,800. Because somebody sitting up there made a bad decision five years ago. So we need to straighten this problem out, especially because we're going to have new kids on the block very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that wishes to address city council at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Alfing, which is at last, have we said that? Last Monday, Tuesday?
Please identify yourself for the record, if you would, be so kind.
Okay, my name is Wilfredo Leras, L-L-E-R-A-S. I've lived in Palm Coast over 21 years, okay? First of all, last Tuesday, we had a great meeting with the Honorable Mayor. So what was happening, everybody was concerned. Let me get back to this. I have to blame the Palm Coast pool people. I tell you for what? Because I'm supposed to get, and now, I want to share this with you, because it's very personal. I'm supposed to get a pacemaker, okay? Fibular and a stent from a hospital up in Jacksonville. Thank the Lord, I don't have it. You know why? Because it's your fault. It's your fault because I swam. And I swam, and I swam. Now I'm 100 percent. Now, sharing that, that's, thank you very much for that. Now let me get on to this. Okay, please note that the only pool open now is the Belt Air Swimming Racquet Club. The Frida Zamba Atlantic Aquatic Center is closed for swimming. It will be open April 2nd, April 7th. This simple means the only heated pool in all of Palm Coast is Belt Air. This only pool needs to accommodate 125 families in Palm Coast, including the beautiful little fishes. I call them little fishes. I love them, at the same pool. Have you ever called up the building department and inquired as to the number of new building permits already on the books for the next five or 10 years? You are talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands of homes. The impact fees and taxes alone will cover the cost in addition to Olympic-sized pool with a diving board. The pool now is closed, oh, let alone the restaurants and stores. The pool closes at 3:00 P.M. That's not a problem. Please do the math. It is very simple. Oh, what about the beautiful little fish that may join the Olympic team? You never know. If you fail to plan, you plan to fail. All is good for the future. Plan, plan. You have to land. What is the problem? Last thing, if you ever research the medical and physical benefits of swimming, not only for seniors, for the entire residents of Palm Coast. We, the people, we, the people, us, taxpayers, want to enjoy Palm Coast healthy. Thank you. God bless America. By the way, 16 years old, U.S. Navy, okay? Thank you very much. All is good.
Thank you for your service, and thank you for your comment as well. Well, is there another speaker that would like to address city council at this time?
Morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. My name is Penny Malinowski. I've lived in Palm Coast for the last 10 years. And one of the things that drew me here was, I'm here to talk about Belt Air Swimming Racquet Club also. It's a beautiful diamond in the rough, and we have to get it out of the school board's hand. Every year since I've been here, there's controversy over the school board. They don't want, they don't want to be bothered. They really don't. And then we get into a dump where they want to close it, and then people are arguing and don't know where to go. And now that Palm Coast has such a population, actually, we need two pools. We need Frida Zamba open all year round, and we need Belt Air open all year round. It's a senior community, I think, because there's a lot of seniors that go there. And it's a senior pool. It's more comfortable for our seniors. We get out, we socialize, we see people, we swim. Some of us have limited mobility, and it's the best thing that we could do. But the school board, really, if Palm Coast is interested, you have to take it out of the, out of the school board's hand and really do something with that pool. Don't let it close. It'd be a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker in the audience?
My name is George White, and I live at 12th Park Road, East Palm Coast. I find myself wanting to talk to you about two topics, both regarding traffic. One is, on Cimarron Drive, there's heavy traffic. You've probably all driven down there. There's a lot of cars, and some dog walkers and walkers and bicycles. And we really need a sidewalk on Cimarron. For safety, there's a place that my neighbor's called Dead Man's Curve, where it's, it's really dangerous to go around that curve if you're on a bicycle. Second traffic pattern is the boats. And that is that I moved here mainly, mainly because of the waterways and the protection the canals offer during the hurricanes and all that. But I'm now at the point with my canal that I have to, I can't go, I can't take my boat out on low tide because it's silted in. And a lot of my neighbors are in the same situation. And if it gets much worse, I won't be able to take my boat out on a high tide. So I think, I think the C-section deserves some, some attention and some maintenance. I don't think there's, I don't think there's ever been any maintenance on the saltwater canals, whereas there's maintenance on the freshwater canals. And so we need some maintenance on the saltwater canals to dredge them out, and we need a sidewalk for safety on Cimarron. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker in the audience this morning? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Glenn Partlow. I live on Eastwood Drive in Palm Coast. I've been here for about 20 years. I'm an avid cyclist and swimmer. I'm mostly here to talk about the two pools that are aging and inadequate. I coached Matanzas High School for 10 years, and the, both pools are not deep enough for normal competition. We have to run swim meets by standing in the water and pushing off rather than diving in. And I'm sure you've seen the Olympics and such things where people are diving in and swimming away. So that's, that's a difficult issue. Frida is an old pool. It's got one locker room that's open to the air with one shower. It's, it's in need of, of a new bottom. So I think that there's a need to make a plan for a swimming complex that is what you would call an Olympic-sized swimming pool. 50 meters long, 10 lanes wide, with a facility so that older people can get in and out. Right now, it's not easy for older people or handicap people, as Helen was speaking about. I cycle a lot on the Lehigh Trail. Wonderful trail, easy to get to Culver from my house on Eastwood, easy to get to Route 1, well-maintained. The Belt Air pool doesn't even have a lifeguard. It's, that's terrible. If someone gets hurt, it's just up to the people who are swimming that can help them out. A person fell not too long ago and cracked his head open, and there was blood everywhere. The Frida Pool has excellent lifeguards and is a very safe place to be. But it's an inadequate pool. It gets deeper as you go left to right. Not, there isn't a deep end. It's a deep side of the pool. Good for little kids to get in, but not good for swim meets where we have to start in the water. So I want to make that, that issue known to you. But I do appreciate your survey that's done every year. But the survey does not really focus on swimming pools. It just focuses on general availability of recreation. So I want to tell you that cycling is great, the swimming, not so much, and it's getting worse. But thank you for your time.
And thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Mark Lewis, Palm Coast. Just want to say, please move forward with plans to maintain our saltwater canals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to speak to city council at this time?
I'm Al Cryer, Mr. Mayor, and from the Committee on Safety on Cimarron. This morning, I just want to cover three things very quickly. One of them is our 2021 petition that we had signed. Number two is why we went back out on the street again on 202022 to survey again. And number three was just a couple of the comments that we've gotten on these house-to-house calls. Okay, number one, there's 800 residents that have to come through Cimarron every day, and we made calls on over 700 of them. 95 percent of them want a bike path, a walkway, something to make Cimarron safer. Why did we start again, again, in 2022 on a Cimarron, a survey? We found out that there's almost 10 to 15 percent new ownership in our area, these five, of these five communities that have to go through Cimarron every day, and that we wanted to bring them up to date. But believe it or not, again, 95 percent of them came up. We've just been here a short time, or we're building here. We got construction equipment, anything. But it is, it is not a safe situation. We want something done with a sidewalk, walkway, et cetera, whatever can be done legally. Okay, going around house to house, we're almost at 1,000 face-to-face meetings, and a lot comes out of woodwork. And one that constantly comes up, I mentioned it a couple times already, this is an accident waiting to happen. Another one that comes up is, the city's spending a lot of money on new areas for the city, walks for these people that aren't even living here yet. And this has to be done. I know that. But this is for the people, the people that are here now, that are living there. These people pay over $4 million a year in taxes. These people, if you ever check it, have a very, very high voting ratio. But they are the people that are here. It's for the people, by the people. It all started in 2008. It's fallen off the table many times. But you people, the city, the council, and a large number of volunteers has brought this thing forward to where it is today. All I have to ask and thank everybody for this is, let's keep it moving ahead, because we have to get it done. We have to start someplace on this. I want to thank everybody again. I appreciate the time you always give me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers in the audience today that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment and come back to the dais. Would any city council member like to comment on, on any item today?
Just very little. Mr. McDonald, your numbers are not far from the truth at all. Okay? So basically, it's costing us at this point, the Green Lion is costing the city, the Palm Coast, $2,800 a month, costing us at this point. Meanwhile, I see people out there that don't know. One of them came to me, and what he called me until I told him the truth. It's a joke. Okay? And I, I mentioned that to the, to the city manager, that I had that sort of thing. I've been there quite a few times, and I see what's going on. So trust me, we paying right now $2,800, maybe a little more, a month out of the city pocket to keep it. And why do you see people out there? Even candidates for this office are talking about what they don't know. They should know about it. The other thing is, hold on one second, I think I lost my train, was the last person... Oh, Mr. Cryer, I don't know if you have heard of machine gun, but that's what my neighbor sounded like when I told him. Are you willing to give up a foot and a half of your driveway, like I'm willing mine, to make this Eric Street a little wider so we could come up with a thing? His answer was a machine gun. No, 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 no. So we have a problem that we're going to solve. We spoke about this already. But where are you going to get the three feet for that walkway? It's going to be taken from the street itself. And if you're going to straighten them up, and I'm just being blunt about it, if you're going to shrink that street by three feet, you hardly going to have room for a truck to go by. So it's a problem. I could understand the, the staff, and I could understand the city manager. It's a problem. It's a safety problem. How do we solve it? No miracles. And like, we had this discussion, the two of us, which I love talking to you. I still got to get you in a golf course, but that's a different story. But we discussed this. It's where are we going to get those three feet? People don't want to give up a foot and a half of their driveways, just, and that would, to begin with, they don't want to give up a foot and a half of their driveways. They don't. They simply don't. Okay? And that's, that's my, that's my comment about it. Believe me, I, I, do I sympathize with what's going on, because I have the same problem. I have to ride my bike before I get on, 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 by the way, I've seen you on the trails, okay? Because I ride the same, the same trails. To go from my home, and I have a little short distance, you probably have a much bigger distance, to go on Eric Drive to get to East Hampton, where we safe. So it's a problem that we have, and please let's keep in mind that we need to solve these problems, but we got to solve it coherently. Okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilman Clufus, any comment?
I appreciate that.
Councilman Danko, any comment for this morning?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Just as a reminder, today is a city workshop, so that those that may be tuning in via YouTube are also aware that the council meets in workshops to be well-informed of each item to be brought before the city council and to make the best determination on behalf of all city residents. Our city staff presents detailed information during the workshops and provides a summary background for each item, as well as any additional documents relative to the item. The city council can then have a meaningful, collaborative, healthy discussion on each item presented. This way, facts and knowledge can be obtained prior to the next business meeting, where city council then makes the best determination in the interest of the citizen's health, safety, and welfare on each item. As we continue to grow as a collaborative council and follow all council meeting policies and procedures, I will always do my best to make sure that every city council member has an opportunity to bring forth individual opinions. Our constituents are expecting council to communicate cohesively and with civility to serve our community. The workshops are a valuable tool to present and discuss our individual opinions on behalf of all residents and achieve these objectives. We may not agree with each other, but that is one advantage of the workshops, to evaluate all the information necessary in advance of a decision, a motion, and a vote at our next business meeting. I hope that we will all understand the purpose of these workshops, and I invite all opinions at all times. So thank you for that. And with that, we'll move to item number E on our agenda this morning, which will be presentations. And first up this morning, ladies, if you would proceed.
Sure. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Lauren Johnston, Chief of Staff, and Brittany Kershaw, Director of Communications and Marketing. And we will be presenting the results of our 2021 Citizen Survey. The National Citizen Survey is about the livability of Palm Coast. A livable community is a place that is not simply habitable, but it's also desirable. It's not only where people do live, but it's where they want to live. The survey was developed by the experts from the National Research Center at Polco, along with our Strategic Action Plan Work Group. The city of Palm Coast recognizes that great communities are partnerships of all government, private sector, community-based organizations, residents, and all geographically connected. Before we get started, we'd like to review the process for the Citizen Survey that the city of Palm Coast has been using for 20 years, since 2002. The city alternates the method of collecting data between the National Citizen Survey, which is a statistically sound survey, and a homegrown version tailored to the city's needs. The goal is to receive resident opinions about, about the community's quality of life, city services, civic participation, and unique issues of local interest. The survey rules, results then used by city council and city staff to improve services, increase civic engagement, and improve the overall quality of life in the community. This tool has been vital in helping align city council priorities along with the city council and city budget. The National Citizen Survey covers a myriad of focus areas in order to give us responses on many different aspects of the life in Palm Coast. The survey captures residents' opinions considering 10 central facets of our community. Those facets being economy, mobility, community design, utilities, safety, natural environment, parks and recreation, health and wellness, education, arts and culture, inclusivity, and engagement. While not all the items surveyed directly correlate to life in Palm Coast, most do, and this allows for benchmarking our city alongside 600 other cities nationally.
So the survey results provide opinions of a representative sample of 497 residents of the city of Palm Coast, and they were collected between December 3rd and January 31st. The survey was mailed out to 2,700 households, and those 497 are the people who responded to the survey, which gives us a response rate of 19 percent. According to the vendor, the average overall response rate is typically 15 percent, so it's a little better than average. Survey results were then weighted... Survey results were then weighted so that the demographic profile of residents was representative of the demographic profile of adults in Palm Coast. As we go through the results, you'll see percentages listed, and those percentages represent the percent positive of responses. This is a combination of the top two positive response options, either excellent and good or very safe and somewhat safe. And the vendor noted that the survey was administered during the COVID-19 pandemic, which is a time of challenge for many local governments and the nation. And it's important to note that the previous data used in comparison to this year's results was collected in 2019, prior to the pandemic. Once the scientific survey was completed, we were able to open the survey to all residents citywide in order to collect additional data from the residents in our community. All of the results that we're going to discuss through this presentation are from the scientific survey. However, the vendor did note that the results from the open survey are similar in most instances, and all of the results from both surveys are included in your agenda backup packet and are posted on the city of Palm Coast website. So we had a broad marketing campaign for the open survey. We used local media outlets, social media. We put it in our weekly city update email that goes out every Friday. It was attached to the email signature block for every city employee and city council. It was provided onsite. If people were to come to the community center or city hall, they were able to fill out a paper copy, and we did several press releases.
So before you continue, may I ask a question just to, so I can better understand and frame your comments going forward? So you told us the timeline from which the survey respondents responded. It was a relatively narrow window. We've been doing this for 20 years, and remember, this is my first iteration through this. The question I have is, before we look at the actual numbers, during what period of time are the respondents referring to when they answer the question? Are they referring to the week before the survey, the month before, the year before, or prior years? Do you have any indication as to what the respondents' mental frame of time is?
So the survey... The intention is that it would be current, so they would be giving a current representation of what they think the city...
Current meaning?
I would think as they are taking the survey, but that would be open to interpretation.
But reflecting, I'm sorry, it's a hard question, I understand, but reflecting their experience for, over what period of time? The last week, the last month, the last year? If we don't know, we don't know. It's just a question.
I don't think we know, Mayor. I think it's up to interpretation how each person takes the survey.
Fair enough, understood. And then the only other comment I have is that we have increased our marketing efforts to increase the number of survey respondents. So did we in fact increase the number of survey respondents with our new marketing efforts?
For the open survey, yes, absolutely, we did. We received over 3,000 responses. In fact, the vendor was impressed with the amount of responses, and they're currently doing a case study on the city of Palm Coast.
But the scientific is not really, has nothing to do with the marketing that's solicited by the vendor, is that correct?
Correct.
So that pool stays consistent based on the RFP of the vendor, I guess?
Right. It's the way to data.
Okay. That just helps me understand, now I know how to look at the numbers a little bit differently. Thank you.
Sure.
Please go forward.
Okay. So as you can see, the demographics of those who completed the survey, there is a very close to equal distribution throughout the four districts of Palm Coast. I will note that the survey results were weighted by the vendor in order for the demographic profile of respondents to be representative of the demographic profile of adults in Palm Coast. The demographic of those who responded to the survey were compared to those found in the 2010 census and the 2019 American Community Survey estimates for adults in the city of Palm Coast. As we look at how the data has changed from year to year, we do see some statistically significant changes this year. There were 25 questions on the survey, but within those questions, there were 138 items that were surveyed. The majority of responses were similar to last year, or to the last survey in 2019. A few items increased by more than 7%, and 20 items have areas for improvement, and we'll go through them on the following slides. According to Polco, the 7% by-year margin of error indicates statistically significant differences between 2019 and 2021. Anything greater than 7% may be considered a change over time, and anything within the range of 0 to 7% would be considered stable over time. So next, we'll look at the responses that were received during the scientific survey. We've broken these into categories in order to look at the full picture. The percentages shown are the responses of those who completed the scientific survey and responded positively to the items surveyed.
First, we're going to take a look at quality of life in Palm Coast. Residents continue to experience high quality of life. Although area saw a slight decline, there is still an overwhelming positive perception as it relates to quality of life. And as you can see here, we had a 1% increase in a great place to raise children.
As we look at the responses as they relate to characteristics of Palm Coast, we see that the majority of respondents are satisfied when it comes to feeling safe, air quality, natural environment, and economic health. Overall economic health saw a healthy 14% increase. We did see a decline as it relates to overall appearance by 12% and cleanliness by 9%.
Next, we'll move on to questions about the governance of Palm Coast. This is an area that shows an opportunity for improvement as people who responded to the survey gave lower marks than in 2019. Palm Coast and the nation have seen a significant amount of change since 2019, which may factor into the responses. And as you can tell from this slide, those percentages are indicated here.
Next, we'll look at Palm Coast neighborhoods. And as we look at the layout of the city, a focus on neighborhoods, we see that respondents have positive ratings, 87% for neighborhoods as a place to live, which is the same as they rated it in 2019. However, we do see some opportunities for improvement as it relates to affordable housing, land use zoning and planning, and code enforcement.
Parks and Recreation remains a bright spot for Palm Coast. Based on the people who responded to the survey, the marks related to parks and recreation have increased in each category, as included in the slide, and rate the quality of city parks as an 85%.
Moving along to city services. Stormwater management and customer service saw an increase, while public information and sewer services remain similar to 2019. Animal control saw a significant increase of 12%. And the overall perception of city services, according to those who completed the survey, saw an 11% decrease in satisfaction.
When we review the results from questions related to streets and street lighting, we see a slight decline in ease of travel by car, ease of walking, traffic flow, and traffic enforcement. However, there's a significant increase in satisfaction with street lighting, as well as the increase in sidewalk maintenance.
Citizens continue to give high ratings for feelings of safety in Palm Coast as it relates to fire, law enforcement, safety in neighborhoods and commercial areas, and just an overall feeling of safety. We are fortunate to have the wonderful services of our public safety officers at the Palm Coast Fire Department, Flower County Fire Rescue, and the Flower County Sheriff's Office for helping us feel safe in Palm Coast. This also includes emergency preparedness that all city departments and our county emergency management director and city emergency management take very seriously.
As we look at the respondents' responses towards business and employment opportunities, we see a steady increase in the vibrancy of downtown and commercial areas, an increase in Palm Coast as a place to work, employment opportunities, quality of businesses and services, and economic development. There was an 11% drop related to shopping opportunities.
So as part of the survey process with the vendor, we were able to submit some custom questions that we had brought topics to council previously to discuss. And these would be specifically related to Palm Coast and not necessarily part of the benchmarking nationwide. Our focus this year was on street maintenance, swales, and canals. So this will give us a baseline so that if we were to ask these questions on future surveys, we would have benchmarking for the city of Palm Coast. So the first question focused on conditions of streets, street signs, and pavement markings. All received high responses, with over 70% being positive to each of those. The second question went into more detail on our streets and asked the respondents to rate the need for street enhancements. So we had a variety of answers. No one seemed to feel super strongly about many of these, except very much so a complete network of sidewalks, which goes right into the feasibility study that's already underway. Also, improving or adding turn lanes and improving signal timing received more than
The third custom question asked respondents to rate the quality of their swell. 46% rated their swell as excellent or good condition. We do have an ongoing initiative to increase public awareness of our stormwater system, and our communications team will continue to create educational opportunities to better inform our residents of their swales. The final custom question asked the respondent if they felt Palm Coast should fund a study to determine the cost and scope of dredging the city's 23 miles of saltwater canals. 80% of those who responded to the survey strongly supported or somewhat supported this study. So as we continue and move into next steps, the entirety of the survey results are included in your backup documents for the council meeting and will be posted on the city's website. The responses received are available to this council as a tool for the Strategic Action Plan, planning process, and the upcoming city council one-on-one meetings with our Strategic Action Plan Work Group. We look forward to coming back as a special budget workshop meeting on March 22 to discuss the first SAP evaluation of the year.
Ms. Johnson, just a question. Help me understand, how do I connect the scientific survey results with the public survey results? Do I view them independently, or do I try to compare them? Or what's the, how do I work with the two different surveys?
Yes, sir. So the two surveys, and what we had saw from Polco and how they answered to us, is that majority of the responses from the open survey and the scientific survey were similar into the responses. So you can align your SAP process by looking at them as a whole.
So I could use the results that you presented today in my interview during the Strategic Action Planning Process?
Yes.
And not worry about something different in the other survey? Okay, thank you.
But for clarification, if there is a deviation between the two, we would always side with the statistically significant result.
Right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Nick, I did not hear what you...
I'm sorry. I was just saying, if there is a deviation between the scientific results versus the open survey, that scientifically speaking, we would have to err on the side of the data that is statistically significant.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Comments?
I, first, let me just say this. Parks and Rec bought a line excellent, very, very, very good. Let me put it three times. And the only reason why I don't put excellent, it's because unfortunately, we cannot get 100% on everything we do. Safety, which is the area I love, another brilliant shot, together with Parks and Rec. I think those are the highlights of this. On the other part, governance, people don't think we're doing a good job. And by the amount of complaints that I've been getting lately, trust me, they're not wrong, and has nothing to do with Parks and Rec. Has to do with the way we growing. The growth, it's so fast that people are getting actually complaining to me, almost on a daily basis, they're calling me. Why do we have surveys? We have surveys to find out what people want. Because residents of Palm Coast are the most important thing here in Palm Coast. If any one of us thinks differently, wake up. People are the ones that count the most. That's what we put here to defend the people. Based on that, and therefore, I think next week, I'm going to be proposing a moratorium on any projects that involves multifamilies and other things, if I may, on this side of US1. I know people are not, some organizations are not going to be too happy with that, being at the Home Builders Association, being at the Chamber, being at some law firms, being at one newspaper, whatever. But I don't fold like a cheap wallet, and I don't get easily intimidated by anyone. And once again, I don't fold like a cheap wallet. So next week, I'll be proposing that. And then it's up to my colleagues to see if they want to hear what the people of Palm Coast are saying or not. This is very important. People of Palm Coast is telling us what to do. And trust me, in between this and the race, my phone, I was going to say ringing off the hook, but I don't have a hook on this phone. The older ones had it. It stopped. And then you have no answer for these people. I have no answers. And that's why we need to regroup, get a moratorium, and see what's good for Palm Coast, or what's good for us, which I don't think has any special interest over here, to be honest with you. What I know about my colleagues, I don't think has a special interest. I just think we should pay attention a little more of what the people of Palm Coast are saying. That's what the surveys are for. And eventually, one survey, it's going to be about the way we're growing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. At this, all right, glad you have a comment?
Absolutely. I was just also going to comment on the, when going through the results, one of the other things, in addition to our citizens not really being satisfied with governance, there was a highlight that I can take as a silver lining, is that we're seeing increased participation from our citizens in city operations and also attending city events and city meetings. So although their overall vibe on how we're performing as a body up here may be in the negative, I think it is a positive that we can take out of this, that at least we are having a constituency that is willing to more actively participate in government. And I think overall, everybody wins when more people participate.
Thank you for that. Councilman Clufus?
Counselman Danko? I just want to echo your comments. I was going to say the same thing, but thank you. I fully agree.
Okay, good. At this moment now, Vice Mayor, with respect to your comment, I just want to take on the responsibility and reel us back just a moment here before we take a step too far forward when we use that word "moratorium." I'm going to revert to council. Can you just guide us a little bit on what the legalities of a term? I don't want the term to be misused out in the community. I'd like it to be defined very carefully and correctly today.
Well, typically, moratoriums are not permanent. Utilized by a city council or a local government, they're put in place temporarily to study a certain matter. For example, mining. Say there was industrial mining going on, and a county or a city wanted to do a study on the effects of that, the environmental effects, things like that, then they would temporarily suspend that type of use until they could further their study. Now, moratoriums, from a legal perspective, are extremely dangerous. Frankly, they open up the city to potential liability, and that's through different takings claims from those property owners that may have, you know, obviously, any property owner that would be, in this case, that would be allowed to have a multifamily... that would be, in this case, that would be allowed to have a multifamily development would be stopped from doing so if a moratorium were passed. And then, and then those property owners would, the city would leave itself open to challenge for that. So in any case, moratoriums should not be utilized unless there is a significant issue facing health, safety, welfare issue facing the city. And even then, you know, I would, legally, they're advised against because they could, as I said before, result in liability.
I appreciate the clarification. And just one other point, it wasn't long ago that the, this council signed a, an agreement, I don't know what the right term is, from the state of Florida regarding property rights, if you'll remember. Does that filter into your comment about private property ownership as well?
Right. So what legislature required was that the city pass a property rights element in their comprehensive plan. And the city did that. They adopted a property rights element because the legislature wanted to make sure that, you know, that in every case where zoning is being considered, the comp plan analysis includes the rights of individual property owners to develop their property as they seem fit. The legislature thought this was an overwhelming right that citizens have. And so it was integrated into not only Palm Coast Comprehensive Plan, but Comprehensive Plans around the state.
Okay. I appreciate the detailed explanation. And in no way do I mean to suggest that our residents and citizens of the city of Palm Coast should not be the ones to dictate the vision and the future that we have as long as we stay within the lane of legalities. We certainly, as city council members, cannot expose the city of Palm Coast to liability that we couldn't possibly afford to, to pay for. So there's a balance here, which puts the, the weight and the gravity on our shoulders much different than it has ever been perhaps in the last 21 and a half years as we look forward to the next 20 years. The game has changed, the things are different, and what we are looking at going forward may require a different perspective and the liability will fall back on us, on city council, to make the best smartly managed decisions regarding future growth that we possibly can. So Councilman Danko, you had a comment?
I just have a question. Before either you or me were elected to council, this council put a ban, a moratorium on building Dollar General stores. Just curious, is that still in effect?
I think it was only temporary, six months.
That was six months only.
The council answered for us. And then it expired, correct?
Did that actually pass?
Let's, let's hold for a second. City manager, if I may, could I have Mr. Di Lorenzo? I think he can give us the, the correct answer, if you would be so kind, so we don't misstate it.
Good morning. Mayor, City Council, Jason Di Lorenzo, Chief Development Officer. It was six months or maybe a little bit less that we had the moratorium in place. During that time, we reviewed legislation, our land development code, and we proposed changes to the land development code in regards to small box retail stores. And city council accepted those changes and then we updated the land development code. So the process was, we were planning to have something called legislation in progress. We, we started legislation in progress, set the moratorium, reviewed the issue, brought it back to city council for a decision, ended the moratorium.
Okay. So if Dollar General wants to build a store, they're not going to have a problem, right?
They can, but there was changes to where they can.
Which was the whole problem to begin with. Okay. I just wanted an update because I didn't know.
Now you have the correct, good, thank you.
And if I may, and with all due respect, once again, I say that, and our council said, and said it right, we're going to be challenged unless we do moratoriums for health and safety reasons. We also should add their quality of life. And the people of Palm Coast thinks that's the problem with that. We are legislators here. We make the laws. We make the laws, municipal laws over here. Let's keep that in mind. Second, if that is so illegal, Oakland, Florida, just did exactly what I'm thinking about proposing over here. And remind you, there's no illegality on that. This is Oakland, Florida. No illegality on that. So therefore, and I'm not saying this is a form of shutting me up, I still think that the people of Palm Coast needs to be heard. And the only way we're going to hear them, it's use the word moratorium. Moratorium is nothing but a delay. And I said before, get us our staff together. We got to get these things together. And that's why, right now, because when things come in front of us, it's either we approve it or we approve it. That's the problems we have. If we don't approve it, then we're going to be challenged, then we're going to be sued because they already passed the planning boards. And then we have to do it. And mostly, you know that I've been voting against every single one with family, with more than one multifamily homes. And I do that to protect the people of Palm Coast. I know what's been living under those conditions is. I know where I came from and I know what I don't want to see. And I know the people been talking to me. So quality of life should be something that we should keep in mind. And if the people of Palm Coast is telling us, listen, do something about it, do something, and then we have the threats, or we're not going to be voting for you. That's the part that even bothers me most. People threatening because I'm not doing what they want, when I actually agree with what they want. So to bring it here, okay? And I still, I'm still going to propose a moratorium without fear, with all due respect, without fear of any legalities, because we can do it. It's not illegal. It's not unfair to represent the people of Palm Coast by saying, let's get it a six-month period or whatever period. So we, staff and council get together and try to do what people of Palm Coast wants. And that's all I'm saying. And I fear no illegality on this because we legislate. And as long as we do it in good faith and within the law, we are okay. Thank you.
Ladies, thank you for your survey. And I, for one, look forward to using the results of the survey, incorporating them into my strategic action planning interview with, with your team. And I would hope that each of our city council members will use these results as they put forward their vision for the coming year budget for the city of Palm Coast, so that we understand this survey will lead into our strategic action planning process, the individual interviews, which ultimately will define the budget for the coming year. So very important and great information, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
See you tomorrow. Hey, Teddy.
All right, with that, we'll move on to agenda item number, presentation number two. And Councilor, is there a resolution for you to read into the record?
Yes, there is. This is the Community Development Block Grant Assessment of Fair Housing Resolution. A resolution of the City Council of City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the assessment of fair housing, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute the necessary documents and to file the documents with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and an effective date.
Mr. Papa.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council.
Congratulations again on your, the artwork and your family. Hopefully, they earn some creative link from you, but congratulations to them.
They do. Thankfully, it's not the walls anymore. So good morning again, member, members of city council and mayor. This is the Assessment of Fair Housing. And the reason that we're here today is that as a recipient of federal funds, the Community Development Block Grant, this is one of the required documents that we have to complete. As you know, every five years, we can complete a consolidated action plan for the CDBG program. And then every year, we come to council with the annual action plan, which dictates where those CDBG dollars are spent. So as a recipient, we are required to meet the requirements of the Fair Housing Act. And one of those is that as a recipient, we must affirmatively further fair housing, that is, we must do, be an active participant in, and take meaningful actions where we can see patterns of segregation and address barriers that might restrict members of a particular, of a protected class from having access to fair housing. And those protected classes include race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status or disability. So in the Assessment of Fair Housing, the city goes through the process of, first of all, determining who lacks access to opportunity and addressing those inequities among those protected class groups, promoting integration and reducing segregation if such situation is encountered in, as part of this Assessment of Fair Housing. And also opportunities to transform racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity. So, you know, just to cut to the chase here, we really don't have that situation here in Palm Coast. Our city is fairly integrated. We don't really have any large pockets of poverty. So we don't encounter those same issues that the larger municipal areas have. And I think this is why that fair housing. And the data here that we have is provided by HUD. And that's because every recipient, from the smallest municipality to the New Yorks and the Chicagos, have to go through the same Assessment of Fair Housing. And because HUD's providing the data, they use the same data source to provide the data that we include in our report. And I'm sorry, I completely neglected to introduce that we have online with us, Mr. Randall Irwin, who is with the Institute for Technology and Building Safety, who helped compile this report and complete the report for the city. And he's on standby if there are any questions from council regarding the report. So within this fair housing assessment, I'll try to move on a little faster. You know, we, we look at the data that HUD provides. We sort of ground truth that data that HUD provided with, with surveys of local organizations and making a survey available to the citizens. The one thing that we will say about the survey, it's not scientific. It was just a random survey made available on the website and whoever came across it can fill it out. So to draw any conclusions on it, it's just sort of to get a feel to see if, you know, based on just randomly asking, whoever might come across that survey, if there are any fair housing issues that they think might, they've encountered here in the city. So the, this Assessment of Fair Housing just includes the background on the city. As you know, the city continues to grow, 23% over the past decade. Our breakdown continues, that the city continues to be predominantly white, with black or African-American as the next most common race. And that ratio continues to be fairly similar between 2010 and 2020. So as I mentioned, that HUD provided these data. And the one thing that they require every recipient to look at is the level of segregation or integration within a recipient municipality. And so they have something called a dissimilarity index, where low numbers good, zero, that's perfect integration, 100 is complete segregation. And as you can see in the data below, in the table, I don't really have it highlighted, but like for the mixing of non-white and white, you have a low dissimilarity index. And again, low numbers are good, high numbers are, leads you to segregation. So being in the teens, that's a good indication that the city has good integration. And as, and compared to the region, we're part of the Daytona, Daytona Beach, Ormond Beach metropolitan statistical area, significantly better in terms of integration compared to even the region as a whole. The other thing that I mentioned in the beginning was what's called recaps, or racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. As, again, HUD provides its data and if you look over here, the purple lines indicates where you might have recaps. This is the, the boundary of Flagler County. This is the city of Palm Coast here. I'm sorry. This is the city of Palm Coast. And as you can see, there are no purple lines within any areas of the city indicating that there are no recaps or racially, racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty within the city. These areas are in Volusia Crescent Lake, I believe, and, and that's, I'm not quite sure what that area is. So again, this data is provided by HUD. They have formulas that they include in their documentation that they essentially pass down to the municipalities to complete the study. The third main thing that HUD provides is disparities in access to opportunity or opportunity indicators. There are measures or indicators that, that HUD looks at to determine how successful a neighborhood, and when we say neighborhood, in this case, it's at the census tract level because that's where the data is. You know, how certain community assets, education, employment opportunities, transportation among, and others, are accessed by, by people. And by looking at the formulas that they've created, does any race or, or ethnicity stand out in terms of, they score lower in terms of this index in having access to those opportunities, such as good schools, employment opportunities, transit and so on. So, you know, not to get too deep into it, but we'll, we'll look at that, you know, again. So the opportunity indicators that HUD has created include low poverty, school proficiency, labor market, low transportation costs, jobs proximity and environmental health. And again, are there significant disparities in that a particular race, it tends to be more concentrated in a high poverty area or in a, in a neighborhood, again, at the census tract level, that their environmental, the environmental health index is much lower for that particular race? And so this is a table 12 of the Assessment of Fair Housing. And I know that there's a lot of numbers here, but I would just, I would just like to point out the highlights of what the findings are that, of the data that HUD has provided. Again, so the top half of the table are the Palm Coast results. As you can see, the, the two blue lines, this is for the total population here. And this is again, for the total population, but broken down, broken down by ethnicity, race, but it's concentrated to the population below the poverty, poverty line. So again, looking at it really at a cross of just not ethnicity or race, but also where you are on the economic spectrum. So looking at the subgroup of the population that's below the poverty line. And the top half of the table, the Palm Coast, the bottom half is the region or the metropolitan statistical area. So just in comparison of the city with, with the region, in terms of certain indices like environmental health, school proficiency and low poverty, the city scores higher than, than, than the region. I think that's probably just, and what that would be is an indication that we're not as exposed to environmental health issues as much as other residents within, within our region. Schools are better here in the city. And in terms of, again, poverty concentration, you don't really have that much of a difference really between city and the, and the rest of the region. Now, where we do have the differences, and you can see it, I'll pick on the transit index. Again, low numbers not good, high numbers are, are better. For the transit index, we're in the fives. And, you know, for, for below the poverty line, we're in the fours and ones. And if you look at the region, they're like in the 15, there's 27s, 30s, 15s, 24s, 28s. And what is the one thing that we know about transit service in the city? And what is the one thing that we know about transit service in the city compared to what Daytona or Volusia County has? We don't have fixed transit. And the way that the transit index measure, there's a documentation for this that HUD provides, is really about how easily accessible is transit? Well, if we don't have a fixed transit system, we're going to score lower than the rest of the region, the Daytonas and the Ormonds.
Can you elaborate in the word transit as to refer to this?
Yes. So the way that they look in terms of transit service, it's fixed transit is what the indices look at. And fixed transit, we mean like a bus service. And by bus service, we mean a fixed bus service that you know it's going to come, you know, every 30 minutes from seven o'clock in the morning to seven o'clock at night on this route.
So it's transit, transit, transportation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that's.
I just want to make sure that it was not referring to transition type of thing.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, sir. Yes, transit, yes. And but I will highlight one subgroup that did score high on the transit index because in this case, the Native American population below the poverty line within the city scored high on the transit index. And that would be an indication that they're probably very transit reliant. That is, that they're more likely to call for that transit because the service that we have is transit, paratransit, the on-call service. So likely within that population subgroup, they are the ones most likely to use that service. But again, you know, the population of Native Americans in the city is not very big.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So there is that skewing that happens because when you get into these subgroups, if you have a real low population, it could tend to skew the index higher or lower. Yeah, I guess the example I would use is that if we had 20 of X type of people and half of them use transit, well, that's going to be like 50%. That's a very high score. So that's and that's where we are here. So just those things to highlight. And so what is, I'll get to more why we're actually doing this. So looking at it across the line, again, you know, the index looks at race and subgroups of race below the federal poverty line. And again, so here again, the indices for Native Americans below the poverty line really just tend to stand out compared to the indices for other subgroups. And so there is, I guess, the conclusion here would be that there are challenges that for our Native American population that's within the city below the poverty line and that their exposure to poverty might be higher than other races, their access to the good schools is more challenged than other races. And of course, even the labor market where jobs are available for them, that tends to be a challenge also. Part of the assessment of fair housing is looking at disproportionate housing needs. And here HUD defines this where you have a racial ethnic group with an income level experiencing a housing problem that is at least 10 percentage points higher than the entire population at that income level. And HUD defines what those housing issues are. The lack of a complete kitchen facility in your unit, complete plumbing facility in your unit, overcrowding more than a person per room, you know, or being cost burden. That is, when your housing costs, what you pay for rent or mortgage plus your utilities exceeds 30% of your monthly income. So when you're faced with one of those situations, you're considered to have a disproportionate housing need. And if you're within below a certain income level, that is also part of what this report includes. So just looking at the data that HUD provided, two, three things stand out. And in terms of our of black, non-Hispanic households experiencing one of those four housing problems, we see from their data that 46% of those households experience at least one of those four. We don't get into a detail of what those, which of those four is, but it's there. And also other households, you know, non-Hispanic. So again, that's at 48%. And again, that's because in total, 33% of households within the city experienced one of those four housing problems. And again, the definition of disproportionate is that if you score 10% more than the population as a whole, then you're considered to have a disproportionate housing needs. So here, compared to the 2016 report, the percentage of households with those four housing problems, it has been reduced. It's down to 33.54%, whereas in the 2016 report, it was at 41.27%. And that similar reduction is also seen for those subgroups, the African American household and the other non-Hispanic household that we've highlighted here, that although they still have disproportionate housing needs, that percentage compared to the 2016 report has been reduced. The table on your left is the 2016 report, and the table on your right is the 2020 report. And so going back just to for the African American households, back in 2016 report, 58% experienced disproportionate housing need, and that's been reduced to 46. And again, total overall, 41.2% back in 2016, 33.54% in 2020. Now, this leads me to explain why we're doing this. The whole purpose of this assessment of fair housing is to assist a municipality in identifying where the issues might be and where those federal dollars might be well spent to give you some direction as to what your problems are or if you're facing any of these segregation or disproportionate housing issues and to be able to address those using household, using CDBG dollars. And this is a good example where we see if we have a disproportionate housing need in particular race or even with the population in general, that allows the city to prioritize an activity that might address that issue with their CDBG dollars. And that's what we do. You know, one of the main activities we do with CDBG is the owner occupied rehab where we assist those who are income qualified to address any health safety issues in their house, whether it's a roof, an air conditioning, maybe they need a new hot water heater, maybe the bathroom needs to be refurbished for handicap accessibility. That type of activity directly addresses some of the issues that HUD points out that we have in our city. And so this is really why we are required to do this as part of our CDBG program. So ground truthing the data that HUD provides, you know, so we just issued a survey, one that was for local organizations or groups that work with housing or social service, and one that was just issued to the general public. Again, non-scientific, it was announced on our social media channel, it was on our website. And so there were 84 responses to that survey, which was up for like two weeks, I believe. So based just on the 84 respondents, you know, they really sort of consistent with the findings from HUD, there are no real areas of minority concentration, no highly concentrated areas of low to moderate income households. And you know, if they were to identify any low moderate income areas, they would say that it's really scattered throughout the city. And again, you know, other findings from the survey included that they, the respondents didn't really see a need for additional opportunities for low to moderate income households or the elderly and disabled. But on the same hand, they would support, you know, any efforts to make it more available for those populations. And the one and the other thing is that the public transportation through that survey is recognized as an issue in the city. But on the other hand, in that same survey, they leaned toward the opinion that jobs and shopping and access to services were easily accessible, which, you know, the results somewhat contradict whether the need for public transportation versus saying that, well, it is easy to get there, but maybe recognizing the need that not everyone has access to a car or is as mobile as maybe the respondent is of that survey.
Jose, is it potentially correct to say that maybe some of these formulas are a little bit, we live in a different world than when these formulas were created in the regards of ride sharing apps and the different ways and means that we have availability to basically facilitate transportation and the facility? I understand that at one time, having a fixed bus route or taxis was essentially the only way for this to operate. Is it possible that this formula doesn't take into account like the new age stuff? Because I understand that these formulas have been solid, but just with this bleeding edge stuff that's happened in the last few years, is there kind of like a catch-up period where maybe that's a reason we see some of the volatility in these numbers?
There definitely will be a catch-up period. I tell you that I looked at the formulas, I reviewed the technical documentation, I would have to go back to school to fully understand all of them, but they do have, you can see what's in the formula. And that's a very good point that in terms of the transit formula, it does not take into account like the Ubers and the Lifts that are now available.
Thank you.
So just continuing on with the results of the final survey, of the survey, again, the respondents did not indicate that there were conflicts within the city based on race, age, or disability. And they opine that most of those are localized, it's not a community-wide issue. And both surveys with organizations and even the general survey indicated that there are more education on fair housing and homebuyer education as more specifically should be made available. So based on that, you know, this assessment essentially, the consultant suggested that maybe there are three actions that the city can pursue and or at least enhance to move forward to address some of the access issues that we have. One would be the establishment of public education opportunities about fair housing annually. I can tell annually, we participate, maybe not during the COVID times, but the Association of Realtors have a fair housing or a housing fair annually that the city participates in, which allows us to distribute educational materials and information about the programs we offer. And you know, specifically now that last year, council approved a first-time homebuyer's program using CDBG funds. So that's a program that we have available out there for the public. The survey also suggested that there's support for more coenforcement efforts to protect property values in our city. And of course, exploring the possibility of public transportation system, not really in our purview of responsibilities, but maybe working with the county to explore that possibility. So this report was presented to our Citizens Advisory Task Force on January 5, 2022. It was also made available for a 30-day comment period from January 27 to February 25. No comments were received. And Citizens Advisory Task Force did made recommendations that have been implemented and or have been included in the study. And they did recommend that the city council approved this report for to submit to HUD. And I will take questions.
Mr. Papa, you suggested that there was a significant improvement in a percentage earlier in the presentation. Could you just redefine what that improvement was? I have a question about it.
Yeah, sure. I think this had to do with the disproportionate housing need. And so I'll just point out that this is the 2016 results.
Right.
Which showed that 41% of all households within the city faced one of those four housing issues. And I won't go.
And we improved it to what?
To 33.54%.
Seven, seven plus points. So the question I have is, does the availability of additional or varied or diverse housing stock, in your opinion, with all of the years that you have been going through this data, help explain the improvement?
I believe that it should. Because if you look at one of the factors that goes into what that, what those housing needs are, cost burden is a big one. And it's probably where we get most of this because if you're paying more than 30% of your income for housing and utilities, you're going to be classified as being cost burden. And I don't know what percentage of that 33% is that has that as their issue. But likely that availability of having diverse housing stock and.
Okay. Thank you. City Council questions? I mean, there's an awful lot of data here. I don't even know how you digest it all. And I'm embarrassed because I chaired this committee for some amount of time. The actual data is harvested from the census?
HUD's data is harvested mainly from the census, like for maybe the population figures. But there are other data within their formulas that they need. And that data source needs to be available nationwide because they produce all this data for every municipality, every recipient. So a data and the one example that they pointed out was that data on the presence of radon in a home, it might be something that we keep up with here in Florida because, you know, radon is one of those natural gases that we're supposed to be, there's that radon disclosure when you buy a home. But that's not everywhere, right? So they are limited in terms of what they use. And so the, those opportunity indicators that they use would be based on the data that they could collect and could be applicable nationwide.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. This, I know there's a lot of work. And I know at the end of, the finish line to this is the CBGG block grant funding that we will receive as a city from the federal government. So all of this is very worthwhile because it does bring dollars from the federal government to improve our housing for those. Thank you.
Yes, and just, I'm sorry, just to wrap it up. The next thing, this data will feed into the next five-year consolidated action plan, which will be before you a little later this year, probably in the summertime. So that feeds into the, this data feeds into that, and then you'll see that.
I just want to make the mayor my words. This took a lot of work. And this assessment is good because it's actually helps us identify the issues, the issues that, at least understand the issues that we could use and help the most needy, no doubt about it. Things that I'm glad, we are according to this, an ethically, we are not an ethically concentrated area. That means we are living in harmony together, which is good. And what I gathered out of this is that still, we are still an equal opportunity city, which is very good, compared to Daytona, Deltona, and Ormond. We're still doing very good. And we basically, a good city with a not so, so good public transportation. That's what I gather out of this mainly. Thank you. Thank you for your work. There's a lot of work.
Councilman, any comment?
Yeah, no questions. Thank you for your work.
Appreciate it. All right. Thank you for the presentation, Jose.
Thank you, Randy.
All right, we'll move on to, oh, you have a, I apologize. Is there a comment from the participant?
I'm sorry, Randy.
No, I was just saying, you're welcome.
Okay. Thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move forward on the agenda to number three. And the council, if you would, read the resolution in for us, please.
Yes, this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the Affordable Housing Incentives Report for Inclusion into the Local Housing Assistance Plan for the State Housing Initiatives. Assistance Plan for the State Housing Initiatives Partnership, SHIP Act, Section 420.907 Florida statutes through Section 420.9079 Florida statutes, and Rule Chapter 30, 67-37 Florida Administrative Code, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Is there, do you have a presentation or a?
Yes, sir, I do.
Comment to go along with this?
Should I apologize? No, I'm sorry. I do have a presentation. And this, this is for another housing program that we have, and this is the SHIP program. Although the city does not administer that program, we are, we do have an interlocal agreement with the county that makes us partners in this program. So the SHIP is a state-funded program, and I'll give you the background for that.
If you could just define the acronym for the audience, if you would.
Yes, sir. So the SHIP stands for the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program. Just a shortcut to it, it's a housing program for, again, income-qualified, you have to be income-qualified, but it is, it is there, it's available. It was passed in the state in 1992 as part of the Sodowsky Affordable Housing Act. Through that act, a variety of affordable housing strategies were implemented, including the collection of, or the set aside of document, document, documentary tax stamps on recorded deeds. So those tax stamps mainly fund two programs, SHIP and SAIL, the State Apartment Incentive Loan Program. I'm, I'm not aware of that ever being implemented in, at least not in the city, I don't think in the county either, but SHIP is the one that we're most concerned with, and the one that we know, know most about. And typically, in a typical year, the allocation's 350,000. It could fluctuate, should always be higher, but legislature controls where, how the certain amount of, of the documentary, documentary stamps are, are used. So in Flagler County, the SHIP program offers a number of activities. And this cutout here, you'll see what they have, whether it's for down payment assistance, they offer an owner-occupied rehab program, similar to our CDBG program, emergency repair, foreclosure prevention, rental assistance, and in times of an emergency, disaster recovery. As I mentioned, Palm Coast and Flagler County have an interlocal agreement for a joint local housing assistance program. That ILA, or interlocal agreement, allows the city and the county to coordinate on affordable housing activities, including having Flagler County as the administrator and the coordinator of the SHIP program. So the dollars go to the county, and they administer the program, really for the entire, entire county. As part of the state law, the act that created SHIP, the SHIP program, there is an advisory committee that's, that's created, and that's the Flagler County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And part of their task, in addition to reviewing the activities that are implemented with SHIP, is to report on housing incentives that were, that are established in Florida statutes. The incentives that I'm going to go over here in this report are in statutes, so they're established by the legislature. And our goal here is to just basically provide a report as part of the next housing assistance plan, as to whether we need to make changes, or we want to tweak how we offer those incentives to, to providers of affordable housing. So the new three-year SHIP, I believe was going to be adopted later this year, and as part of that new three-year SHIP pro, action plan, this report will be included. I just want to again, bring out that there's already an existing report, and what I will present to you today will just be the proposed changes from the advisory committee, so that maybe we can just, I don't have to go through each of them. So one incentive that is in state statutes is that expediting permits for affordable housing projects. And that, that's something that the city already does. We, you know, every permit is expedited in the city. We try to turn around a single-family home in five-to-seven day timeframe, but we will make it clear in the incentives report that it's going to be the objective of the city to review those permits within five days. One other thing that we want to clarify in the report is that in the city, we offer something called the TRX process, the Technical Review Extreme Process. And this process is an opportunity for not just an affordable housing developer, but for any developer to meet with city staff. And by city staff, we mean that it's staff from, also from other disciplines that will be reviewing their project, traffic engineer, stormwater engineer, utilities, and of course, planning. We all sit in a room or in a table through Zoom right now, and allow a developer with their project to, to present it, and allow staff to review it at that point and, and provide comments. The significance of this is that it allows a developer to, to go through the process more efficiency, more efficiently. They get comments, they sit at one table, they have everyone that they need at that table. They're going to get their comments in, in, in a, in a formal, with a formal letter or review. And as part of this process too, they have one contact for the city. A project manager is assigned, and that's their contact. They don't need to go chasing traffic engineer or stormwater engineer. You go through the project manager, and it's, the project manager will serve sort of as an ombudsman between the developer and, and city staff. And really, what this does is that it really allows, again, for the efficiency in process, in the process that, by the time you make a formal submission, I think most of the technical issues, you know, the little nitpicky things might still be there, but the bigger things are out of the way. And again, so the formal process becomes a little smoother and more efficient, again, for, for a developer. One of the things, again, in statutes also is an ongoing review of the process for these incentives. And so here we are, you know, every three years, we're going to do this, review our incentives and see how we're, if we need to make any changes. And also part of that is that any ordinance that might have an impact on affordable housing is to be reviewed and, and for its impacts on affordable housing. And so as part of that, we're going to clarify in our incentives report that, you know, we'll, we'll create a policy, probably within, as we do our comprehensive plan update, that if, that certain ordinances, those that might have an impact on housing, would be reviewed by the appropriate advisory board, whether, whether that's the Citizens Advisory Task Force or the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board. An incentive that's offered, or is identified in state statutes is the reduction or waiver of impact fees, or, or finding alternative methods for the payment of, of impact fees for affordable housing. You know, there is a cost, impact fees are collected for a reason, and that they pay for capital improvements. So in our, our report, our incentives, we don't waive impact fees. It's just not financially, financially sound to waive impact fees. What can be offered is that if, if it's waived, you can find an alternate source to pay for the impact fees. And so, you know, if that's the incentive that the developer needs to build affordable housing, that in lieu of paying impact fees, you know, wherever, some other fund will pay for impact fees, then that would be the incentive that would be offered. We will also clarify in, in our incentives report as to what those, what the, what the definition would need to be for someone to qualify as an affordable housing project. First of all, and it's on the volume, number one, the dwelling units needs to be installed for low-income, very low-income residents. And two, there is a affordability period, that is, a lien is on the property for a period of 10 years, so that it can only be rented or owned by a low-income or very low-income person. And it stays that way for that 10-year period, since you, since that developer received that incentive to build that affordable unit. Allowing flexibility and densities for affordable housing, you know, something that we offer in the city is the master plan development, which allows flexibility in a great number of things, from setbacks to lot wits. And that just, you know, allows a developer, any developer, affordable housing or not, to use that as a, as a way to be able to maybe develop more units within that parcel of land. Again, the maximum densities are established in our future land use map and on, by the zoning designation of the property. For example, like in MFR2, 12 units per acre, that's all you're going to get. But if there are specific requirements that, you know, that you have to cut it up into certain chunks, you keep a certain amount of open space, you might not be able to get up to that 12 units per acre that you're, that you're seeking. But with maybe the MPD designation, greater flexibility in how you lay out your, your project, maybe you can squeeze in a few, few more units. So that's, that is available. And again, that's not just for providers of affordable housing, but for any developer. And this one's sort of related, this incentive E, reservation of infrastructure capacity for housing, very low-income, low-income or moderate-income families, it's similar to waiving of impact fees. It's just not financially sound to implement such a thing, because there is a cost to that. That if you're going to say that we're going to reserve X amount of gallons in sewage treatment or water treatment, then another project might come in who would, might be denied, or would have to pay some significant amount to, to bring the plant up to capacity when it's being held for this. You know, the number of units is probably not significant enough to make that type of impact, but there is that fairness issue. And so this incentive is, is offered, but there is a cost to it, that if you want to reserve for an extra year, then there's the payment of some amount of the impact fees to continue reserving that capacity. Affordable accessory residential units. The incentive reports will be clarified that our land development code permits accessory structures without a full kitchen in a residential zoning district. And those accessory structures, of course, cannot be within drainage or utility easement. We will also clarify in our, in the, in the report, that our land development code does not permit the construction of accessory residential units. And those would be defined as units, which include a full kitchen facility. On a single-family lot, the moment you have another unit with a bath and kitchen, or with a kitchen, then you've created a second unit, and that's a duplex, and that's not allowed by our land development code. And so the other flexibilities that are discussed in Florida statutes, reduction of parking and setback requirements, flexible lot configurations, modification of street requirements, as I mentioned, those types of flexibilities are offered by the master plan development zoning district that we have available. And so there, there's no modifications to the SHIP report for that, because it's there, it's, it's available already. And one thing that we, the city is working on to complete right now, as part of the incentives report, we are to, as a city, to provide an inventory of publicly-owned lands, which are suitable for affordable housing. And so that's something that we're working on, and that's something that will make, make available, as required by Florida statutes. And finally, to support development, again, this would be for affordable housing, near transportation hubs and major employment centers and mixed use. We do have a mixed-use designation in our comprehensive plan that provides for opportunities for you, for you to have residential and, and non-residential uses available for any developer to create this mixed-use community. And additionally, the comprehensive plan does encourage the location of multifamily and affordable units within proximity of services and employment opportunities. The policy simply states that if you're going to locate a multifamily project, try to locate it near a transportation hub, like a major arterial, so that if we did have bus service, that would be readily accessible. So that's already in the SHIP report, and there will be no modifications to that section of the SHIP report. As I mentioned, the report was reviewed by the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee of Flagler County. They held a public hearing on February 25th, 2022. The report, I went over the recommended changes that they had, and they recommend approval of the report of those changes. Answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Papa. I do have two questions. Maybe you can bring me up to date. The legislature has or will be capping the Sodowsky Fund generated from the doc stamps at a certain level? And the reason I bring it up is that, does that make the funding more predictable for the future? Because in the past, the Sodowsky Fund has been swept repeatedly by the legislature, so you never knew how much money might be in the pot. So does that mean that we are, we'll be able to forecast the use more easily in the future?
I believe it was to guarantee a minimum.
Guarantee a minimum.
Yeah.
So it could exceed that, but at least it's something to work from.
Yeah.
And the other question I have, and again, I'm trying to jog my own memory here, is my under, it's, I remember that most of the funding, if not all of it, in the SHIP program was targeted for individual homeowners. I don't remember any investment in SHIP funds in developmental stuff. Can you bring me up to date on that? Because you mentioned specifically there are possibilities for, for development, for PUD designations.
Yeah, if, if I did say that, I'm not sure that that is available, Mayor.
Okay. So we're, we're still focused on helping individual homeowners?
Yes.
Is, based on the, the magnitude of the funding available?
I'd be happy to get clarification on that from the housing administrator for, for the county.
And if I may, just for a magnitude question, how many homes, how many homeowners in the county, because remember, this is interlocal agreement, are affected by the program on an annual basis? Could you guess that?
How many do they assist? I will be guessing off the top of my head, Mayor. I will be happy to get that information. I believe we did include it in our past, our caper.
Less than 200, if I remember correctly.
It's less than 200, certainly.
Right, okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Comments by city council?
Good job.
Yeah, good job. Thank you very much for the, that's a tough one, I know.
I appreciate your work with the committees that are responsible for the approval of these things as well. I'm sure your direction is very much appreciated.
They're, they're very good to work with.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is Town Center Vision, Mr. DiLorenzo, I guess. Yep.
I'll get it. My good. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Sorry.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jason DiLorenzo.
Morning.
Morning. Okay. This presentation is Town Center Vision. It's a somewhat annual update that we're providing. Apologize for the date, that's when it was originally going to come to city council. There's no action related to this item, it's just a presentation for you to consider as you prepare for your strategic action planning. So Town Center is a healthy place to live, learn, work, and play, and we're going to today describe what that means. And in front of you, I have provided this table in paper, and that's just for you to take any notes that you, you may wish to as we go through. And we're going to look at these different categories, live, learn, work, and play in some detail, and, and kind of give you an overview of where we are with Town Center today. So there's a variety of housing choices available in Town Center, single-family, multifamily. There's some senior housing, independent living, assisted living, and, and memory care as well. We have K- through university talent delivery now available in Town Center, and we have lots of employment options from entry level to doctor. And we have lots of employment options from entry level to doctorate. And there's lots of things to do as well. These are from the original Town Center plan. These are the development areas that were planned for. And if you look in the legend in the map, we have the urban core, the urban center, town services, town business, town residential being the gold areas, and then town perimeter commercial, which were developed a little bit sooner. And you have the description of those here of what is expected in each part. So I'm going to talk a little about live and I have a couple of photos for you here. The, the one on the left is the entry, the entry column for the Gables at Town Center. That's a single family project in the northern portion. I'll show you on the map in a minute. And on the right is the, the Palms, the apartment complex that was built in 2020. If we look on the map here, you can see all of the different developments and where they're located. Okay, for a single family, we have the, the Retreat at Town Center, that's the Toll Brothers piece in the northwest. In the northeast, we also have the single family, the Gables. The Gables is currently under construction. The road network is in, there's three model homes currently under construction. Toll Brothers is a little bit further away, but they, they have Brook Round on it. For multifamily, we have two types of multifamily coming in Town Center, some is already here. Brook Haven is primarily what, what we would consider a horizontal apartment. And the Haven, which you, if you've been down in, down in Town Center lately, you've seen the construction, the, the earth movement going on. And these are single story rental apartments. And then we have some low rise apartments, three, three story walk up and four story with elevator in the central landings and the Palms. For senior housing, which is over on the east side, over, over here behind the hospital, you have the Windsor and the Lost Palmas. And they, they have independent living, assisted living, and memory care available at those facilities. Please feel free to stop me at any point if you'd like to talk more about the different sections. For Learn?
I'll stop you there.
Okay, sure. I'll go back to the map.
So based on those, that construction or growth, has the, the green space, and I'll just use that term generally, been protected or changed significantly in any way since Town Center area was first envisioned?
Nope, not at all. The open space was already provided for in the original development plan and the open space portions have not changed.
Trails, paths, all those things are still intact from the original vision, which goes back how long?
No, not sure I know.
Way back.
I don't remember. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
2004, 2005 range, something like that. Yep. Yeah, and I have a trail map coming up in, in the end and you can see what's, what is already in place and what will be completed as the remaining developments come online. So Learn, we've had some exciting changes in Learn. These are, I'm somewhere surprised to know that these are actual signs that are in the Town Center for the UNF Med Nexus Program and the Jacksonville University Programs currently located in the city center. And here's the map of the, of the learning opportunities in Town Center. We have a charter school, which is a K through eight school, the Imagine School, that's here in the northeast. And they're at capacity right now. And some of their highlights of curriculum have to do with critical thinking and technology and learning on a global perspectives. Of course, we have the public school, the Flagler Palm Coast High School, which is technically not in the Town Center CDD, but it's immediately adjacent and it's, it's good to consider as part of the overall plan. Of course, that's a public high school, you know, grades nine through 12, and they have several flagship programs, including advanced manufacturing. They have aeronautics and, and drones that are developed through Embry-Riddle, applied health, digital video technology, entrepreneurship, our fire academy that we work closely with, and some veterinary programs as well. The public university is the UNF Med Nexus Project, which is a nursing cohort. They have 25 students in their first semester, which is wrapping up. And then for a private university, we have Jacksonville University and, which offers a, a lot of different programs, mostly medical based at this time. We met with both representatives from UNF and JU last week and to get a, an understanding of how their programs are going and what they're looking towards in the future. Both are, are looking to grow, particularly Jacksonville University is looking to double its, its attendance in the next semester and beyond that as well. And, and they're looking for opportunities to bring different programs to this, to this Any questions about learning in Town Center?
I'm happy, very happy.
Thank you. Next, we'll talk a little bit about working in Town Center. And this is the new, on the left, the photo is the new capstone building, which is under construction. This is exciting. This is a local company that is expanding from a rental property to their own physical location in Town Center. That's on Marketplace. And then some, I, I wanted to include this photo of the Town Center Medical, which is behind the hospital, which a lot of people don't realize is back there and it has a lot of offerings for medical and surgery. Here's the map of all of the employment opportunities in the Town Center, several medical offices. Again, I've included the hospital here, technically the hospital not included in Town Center CDD, however, certainly a big part of the Town Center. On the professional side, we have, you know, financial, banking and attorneys in Town Center. Professional services include tax preparation, a animal hospital, and UPS and Western Union. Plenty of personal services like hair, nail salons, massage, pharmacies, and the major telecommunications companies are all, all have locations in the Town Center. For major retail, we have the Landings, which is generally considered the target center, and then the public supermarket at Town Center as well. And for employment opportunities, we also have this facility, the City of Palm Coast, Flagler Palm Coast High School. We know that our, our education partners hire a lot of folks. And the Florida Power and Light Flagler County Service Center, which is located out on 100. If no questions, I'll continue.
We still have diplomatic agency there that we no longer have.
That's true, we did lose that, yes. Although it was replaced with a, with a college.
Much better.
So, yeah. On the play side, you know, Town Center has been known for the place where Palm Coast holds its events for a really long time. We have several photos there of some of the events that have occurred in Town Center. So this map here, the blue lines are all the trails. There's five miles of trails when the, when the project is complete, we'll have five miles of connected trails. Of course, we have the Central Park and the Racket Center to the northwest, and there's fishing opportunities in the Town Center as well. The yellow on the map is the outline of the Arts District, which was established in 2020, I believe. And for performing arts, we still have the Palm Coast Arts Festival and the Auditorium. Again, Auditorium is just outside of the technical boundaries of the Town Center CDD, but an integral part of Town Center. And in the Arts District, we have the Sculpture Garden that has been developing around Central Park, which is very nice to have. There's other places, other ideas of having fun. If culture is not your thing, we have shopping, movie, dining, hotel, and tourism. And then, like I said, we've had many, many events in Town Center, including the Extravaganza Arbor Day, which is coming up in a couple months. We've had the Memorial Day Ceremony in tribute to the troops. Movies in the Park is an annual event and the Food Truck Tuesdays. And the Strawberry Festival is this weekend, which is a private event, privately run event. So returning to this table, I would like to remind you that we have Council Priority A2 that was approved last year, and I'm going to read that for you. Focus on Town Center brick and mortar for shopping opportunities, entertainment, and restaurants. And there hasn't been a lot of change in that component in the last year. But this vision presentation was to give you an opportunity to, to think about what you, what you see is here and what you think may be missing. So as you work towards your strategic action plan, if you would like to refine this or expand this or, or change it in some way, you, you have the education tools you need to help you with that next step in your process. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. DiLorenzo, it's my understanding that the residential component of Town Center, and I ask the question because so many of our residents drive, you know, through and around Town Center, and it's hard to understand how much of it is committed for already. Are we, are we rapidly approaching the, the, the boundary of residential construction or development within Town Center?
That is a difficult question to answer, but I'll do the best I can. And the difficulty part is that, right, the, the development itself has a certain number of entitlements. And those entitlements can, can be located in different places. They're all assigned to, to different parcels, but they can be moved around within the development a little bit. So starting with that, there are not, there are few residential, full residential, residential only development parcels remaining. And I can point some out on this map for you.
Just generally speaking, I mean, are we at 90%?
No, I wouldn't think we, well, for parcels, probably yes, but not for units. Because there, in the urban core, we have a mixed use, which can, you know, could include residential above retail and office or some combination, but we won't know exactly how that's going to come to fruition until those landowners decide what's next for them.
I'm just trying to share with city council what the future can be. So the, certainly, the, the residential component of Town Center has been chugging along, especially lately, and we probably have to update our vision on what else for the chart here we might want to consider to focus on for the future.
Yes, sir, I think that's, that's accurate. I guess some of the, I'll give you an example that makes why this is a hard question to answer is directly across the street from the city center building, okay, not, not town, not city hall, but the city center building, right? Is, is a parcel that includes three types of entitlements. It includes a, a commercial, an office, and residential. But how that property owner decides to build that and utilize those entitlements will be up, up to them, right? Because they've been assigned a certain amount. So if they don't come in with a residential component with that, then we won't have that port, that piece.
So the question I really want to leave with, to my fellow city council members, as we move forward in our SAP process, is especially regarding the commercial and office pieces, what is it that will bring or drive traffic to locations within Town Center?
Car.
You almost, well, easy, easy answer, probably not, not complete. Because what's important is why would a commercial buyer or tenant want to operate a business in Town Center? So I think the hard question is before each of us to answer on how we can move the Town Center concept forward.
I think those, like you said, they're going to bring in what gives them the most money, which is not wrong with it. So we don't know what they think is going to bring in the most money for. Very simple, I agree with 99.9% of your update. Okay, and everybody knows what my 10th of 1% is, is called the multifamilies. And which, get ready, because you're going to see quite a few of them over there. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add that the brick and mortar is vital to Town Center. And unfortunately, in today's economy, brick and mortar way overpriced. So we may not see much development until the, this economy changes. And perhaps we need to start considering some sort of incentives for businesses to move in there and get that started. Something to think about.
It's a good comment. I mean, the, the concept, and maybe perhaps we have to think outside the box a little bit more. So building an economy based on arts and culture, for example, may be a, an attraction that would bring additional traffic to the Town Center area. It's just one thought, there could be many other different types of economies. I'll give you an example. We visited for the International Economic Development Conference, Nashville, Tennessee, and we were able to witness firsthand what a nighttime, it happened to be music economy looks like, completely separate from the daytime economy of the city, but it brought tremendous revenue and tourists and traffic to the center of the city. Now, I'm not suggesting that that's correct for us. I don't know the answer to that, but it's been successful. So there are ways to think about this other than the way it was thought about 20 years ago. Councilman?
I would just like to thank Jason for the update, and I completely concur that ingenuity will be critical to further development of the economy inside Town Center.
I, I happen to agree with Councilman Dankor regarding the incentives. I'm glad you changed your mind a little bit, because the last time we gave incentives to that area, you completely voted against it. But I'm glad you changed your mind, and we know exactly what I'm talking about.
I'll also say, good work with the rev grants, too, that we are pursuing new opportunities with the city, and I commend your efforts on trying to find new opportunities to attract good businesses here. Thank you.
I, I would just reply, I haven't changed my mind. I've always been in favor of incentives for businesses, free enterprise businesses. I'm not in favor of giving a university that makes $80 million a year, $2 million bucks. I never will be.
Just so you know, thank you.
All right, that concludes your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Very well done, thank you. And the graphics were superb.
Oh, well, thank you to the Communications Department for building these colorful graphics here. And then Jordan Myers in the planning staff helped with this new style of, of presentation. I hope you liked it. It's built in GIS and we, there's a lot more to come.
Please, please thank staff, because I can only speak for a few of us old timers up here. It makes it a lot easier to understand, you know, the proximities and how all of that looks. So thanks staff again for us.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Speak for yourself, Mr. Mayor.
All right, next up, a resolution, councilor?
Yes, this is item number five on the presentation items. This is a resolution concerning the East-West Connectors feasibility study. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving a work order with England, Thems, and Miller, Inc. to provide a feasibility study for an East-West connection, connectors, authorizing the city manager or designate to execute necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council, Carl Cody, Stonemore Engineering Department. This presentation actually covers three items today, that item that was just read, as well as the next two items in your agenda packet.
Thanks.
Regarding the public works facility and then the design services for extending Mantazas West.
All right, you're already talking my language, Carl, this is good.
Mayor, do you want me to read the other two in?
Just, just for the record, why don't you read the other two in so that we can?
We'll have to keep them separate.
No, no, we're not voting today, so read them in so that we're done with that. Thank you.
Good suggestions.
Okay, item number six is the Public Works Facility Master Plan Design Contract and Construction Management Services Contract. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving an amendment to the Public Works Facility Master Plan Design Contract with Pond and Company, and approval of an amendment to the Gilbane Building Company contract for additional construction management services for the public works facility. Authorizing the city manager or designate to execute necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. And item number seven is the Mantazas Parkway West Extension. A resolution of the City Council for the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving a work order with DRMP, Inc. to provide design services for the Mantazas Parkway West Extension. Authorizing the city Authorizing the city manager or designate to execute necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, and just for your benefit, we do have a representative from Gilbane here today, as well as from Pond and Company, as well as from ETM, who are here for your next item, but they do, are related to one of the items on this agenda packet. So if there are additional questions that relate to any of them, they are here to assist with response to any questions you may have. So I'll go ahead and get started. We'll begin with transportation access to the west. So you recently were presented with an update on the 2022 legislative priorities. This happened to be priority three in that presentation, which was transportation access to the west. This is verbatim from that presentation, it was copied from that slide, just giving you history or what that was about. It was really to evaluate the three east-west corridors, Matanzas Woods Parkway, Palm Coast Parkway, Whiteview Parkway, and then opening these corridors up to promote economic opportunities in Palm Coast and Flagler County. It was to support transportation projects and improve access to large land tracts on the west side of Palm Coast, and then improve access to the west, provide opportunities for economic development. And the update to that item that was presented to council was land acquisition and survey and design preparations were underway for the northern access that were associated with the Public Works Facility. And then there was an appropriations request submitted with House Bill for some funding for Phase One of construction. And then there were some dates on when that first reading was done and where it was in the process at that time. So that's just some history on that particular item. This kind of is a map that kind of pinpoints the locations that are going to be analyzed. Number one was Matanzas Woods Parkway West, two was Palm Coast Parkway West, and then there's 3A and 3B, which is Whiteview Parkway, which is on the west end and the east end, and then Royal Palms Parkway, which includes the Lehigh Trail Network. So we'll look at each one of those independently. The Matanzas, a feasibility alignment was completed. That was done in conjunction with the Public Works Facility as we were master planning the Public Works site, as well as with the sawmill development, developing their amenity center. We were looking hard at where a roadway alignment could go, what the connection access points would be, and how that would happen without minimizing impact to either development or in conjunction with each of those active development projects. Some right-of-way was purchased, the area in pink was purchased when we purchased the lands for the Public Works site. We're negotiating the remaining right-of-way needs that are east of the track, the two parcels highlighted in yellow. And then we began discussions with the property owner west of the tracks for right-of-way needs to get up and over the railroad tracks. Surveying environmental work has begun on the area east of the tracks, and we negotiated a contract for design of the roadway extension and to collect data for the area on the west side of the tracks. Palm Coast Parkway West, development of Hospital Site on the west was underway, some alignment of a portion of the roadway was looked at during that time, but there is many private properties and parcels throughout there vacant and developed, a lot of environmental areas that had to be analyzed. So we know development has begun, it will begin, and we were really looking at defining an alignment before development occurs, so we're not trying to backtrack and be shoehorned into an area or a situation where we cannot pursue or move forward continuing west with the roadway. So we negotiated a scope and fee for a feasibility study to look at that, do that analysis. Whiteview Parkway West, we know recently, before council, there was a parcel land that was annexed to the county just on the west side of US-1 at the, where it intersects with Whiteview. It was about 30 plus acres. There's some initial discussions with those property owners in terms of how they may develop the property and what a roadway extension would look like. On the east end, developer is also looking at moving forward with his property, and there are some easements that are in place over there to get up and over 95 and Old Kings Road and extend Whiteview over to connect up with that roadway network. So there are some impacts, implications, some options of how that could be done, if it needs to be done. So we really want to look into the feasibility, so we are prepared if and ever that that was going to proceed, that we are ready to and able to make it happen. And then Royal Palms Parkway, we're looking to coordinate with Flagler County and their long-range plan to extend Lehigh Trail West. They have explored looking at that in the past, and the school district also has property on the west side of US-1. And we know that there are some close proximities to get over the tracks, not too far away, north and south of here, either Otis, Stone Hunter, north, and County Road 13 to the south. So this whole area will be looked at in terms of what's the most cost-effective, efficient, functional connection point, whether it's going to be for vehicular or pedestrian connection point. So we really want to explore that as well during this feasibility study. So we negotiated a scope and fee to take a look at that area.
You have to go cross one, the end of Lehigh Trail to go west?
Correct, the county had looked at a pedestrian bridge at one point in time, seeking funding like they are doing now over State Road 100, to connect that with Grand Swamp Trail, it would be a similar type facility up and over US-1.
What are the options?
That, more than likely, that would be the option. I mean, you, we could go back to the light at Royal Palms and cross at a signalized intersection, but that's going to be part of the discussions with the OT, with the county, and look at what is the long-range plan, the vision, what's the best solution.
Tunnel's out of the question, yeah.
Yeah, probably, yes.
Probably got it.
So in terms of feasibility study to look at these connection points, there are really two items. One of them was to approve a contract in the amount of 1.8, just almost $1.8 million with DRMP for the design services for the extension of Matanzas Woods West. And then there's a resolution for a work order in the amount of $125,000 with ETM to do the feasibility study for those other three areas, East, Whiteview Parkway East and West, and Royal Palms Parkway and Lehigh Trail. Then we're talking about the Public Works Facility, and you'll see that the name change here, Maintenance and Operations Complex. You know, this project has grown, you know, per council direction and our programming of long-term visioning for the city. You know, this facility will house the Stone Water Engineering Departments, the Public Works, our fleet, our utility department, administration, and operations. So it's really our maintenance and operations function of the city. You know, there'll be some supporting staff there as well from IT and finance and customer service. So this is really going to be more than just a so-called Public Works Facility and Maintenance and Operation Complex. It really fits what this facility is going to be in the future. So moving forward, we'll be, you know, referring to the Maintenance and Operations Complex in your upcoming items.
What's going to be Matthew Masters in the title?
So we recently came to you with our Public Works Master Plan that kind of outlined how we plan to develop that site to get us through, you know, 50 years from now, you know, can accommodate our needs, what are the programming needs going to be, and what we, you know, discussed with you, we'll be coming back to you with an implementation plan, a phasing plan, and working with our design team and our construction management firm in terms of how do, how do we develop the site with our budget that's going to be cost-effective and efficient? So really looked at, you know, we got site work items, and then we have building-related items. So this first slide here is really associated with site work. We have broken it up into three areas. A is a first area of the site, which is tied to our fleet facility, which we have all identified as our top priority need, just in terms of operation, safety, you know, it was our top item to begin with in our Phase One. Item B are some associated facilities, that's our wash-down area that's going to be utilized by not just the fleet before they can go work on the equipment, but also all staff in terms of keeping the equipment usable, efficient, maintained. And then C is the development of the remaining part of the site, which would be operations and administrative area of the property. Some of these boundary lines may change, you know, there's some wetland impacts, there's some material we're going to need fill on the property, but we're looking to work in conjunction with our Stone Water Project in the northeast corridor off of London Waterway, where they're going to be digging out areas and needing locations to provide some good fill material. So as we sort out the amount of fill needed, how much fill they have, what areas of the site we can have, as we work through our permitting and other items on this particular property, will be, you know, these lines may adjust slightly. So this just kind of shows you, we're breaking it up to move the project along, gets is really what the intent of this slide is showing and where we plan on beginning. And then as we move to the buildings, we're looking at moving this into four phases. The first item, structure that we would build would be our fleet maintenance building, and then we would move to our, the wash facility, and then we would construct our fueling operations and relocate that here from Utility Drive. And then the fourth item would be the administrative operation building, warehouse, and all supporting structures that go along with that facility to then transition folks to this property. So this kind of shows, you know, the 10-year vision to complete all of those items you just seen. Now, you know, the background on those showed the 50-year plan, so those buildings won't be built to those sizes. The initial 10-year building will be built, showing how it could be expanded in the future, and areas of the site could be expanded to accommodate the additional future vehicles. But this kind of shows the beginning stages, you see some years in there for our Phase One efforts, and then as the other items in terms of site development and buildings really are going to be determined on funding availability. So as we move along the process, finalize design, get some better construction cost estimating done, in looking at our revenues that are coming in, we will be able to assess and identify specific years each year, and we'll update those. So this is really our Phase One implementation plan, this really gets the, more into the weeds and breaks down the design strategy. We're looking to begin our site work ahead of our building work. We're looking to get permits in place and design the site work and infrastructure necessary so we can begin our land clearing and get the property ready to build a building. So we'll continue design on both items, and then get started on the site work first, and then come in and build the building, and then outfit it with the equipment so we can have operations opened up and beginning up in 2024 is our target date now, sometime in that year. So as you know, this project has grown over time, our site work has, you know, gone from 16 acres to 100 acres. We've added the utility department, we've had a lot of changes over time. Our intent is to design the wash facility, the fleet, and the fuel to 100%, and the remaining of the site we designed to 60%. So we were going to have some items that are going to be ready to go moving forward when dollars are available, we're going to be able to obtain all our permitting and start developing the sites as soon as expeditiously as possible. So there's some added costs to do that, you know, we've increased the scope of the project, the extent of the project, the size of the project. So there's some additional design fees that we negotiated with the consultants, close to $1 million for those efforts. So there's a resolution to approve those additional fees for the design team, and then there's some additional construction management phase services. This is basically to recoup the dollars that that firm already spent, that they expended on the previous site. So they provided some cost estimating and some efforts associated on our existing Public Works property as we developed that master plan and looked at options of moving the project forward. So now they're basically starting over on a new property, so this just returns those dollars back into their fee for pre-construction phase services to help look at constructibility options during the design phase, what's the most cost-efficient way to develop the site, to build the site, to build the buildings. They reach out, work with subcontractors, and really get us the most cost-efficient design upfront and move forward most cost-effectively.
Carl, quick question, are we expecting any problems, if I may, from EPA or St. John's? From the EPA or St. John's on this plan?
Everything is a process. We are impacting some wetlands, and even in Phase One. Phase One, they are wetlands that are not in a conservation easement, there are some wetlands in the other part of the property that are in a conservation easement, that we have already begun the process to release those conservation easements. There are a lower quality wetland, they're not as, they're not a top-quality wetland per se, but everything's a process. So I'm not saying that there is or there isn't, it's just a process that we're going to have to work through.
Yes, I just want to make sure there's no surprises. I want this, I was going to say Public Works, but I can't, I was going to say Maintenance and Operations Complex.
We've worked through these similar issues on other projects, so we expect there to be the same outcome, you know, we haven't, we haven't had any issues, we've done this before.
Nothing that we can't handle, nothing that we can't handle.
Correct, we've done it before, I guess is how I could leave it.
Thank you.
Carl, are you finished with the presentation?
That is the end of the presentation.
Thank you for the presentation, I just want, I just want to make a note again, and I'll reinforce this when I can. So I'm thinking back to your presentation and the presentations, the two prior presentations that we just listened to, and again, and I'm really looking forward to future city councils. The skill set that you are, as staff, asking us to use to understand the technical and the variety of information that has been presented today is far beyond certainly any of the planning that was done, you know, 20 years ago. It seems to me that it's much more sophisticated, it's looking out how far, 50 years, in some cases, on the plans, and the data is much more detailed and, quite honestly, difficult to analyze. So we as city council members have to, I guess, raise our own bar, and future city council members as well, to be able to look at these presentations and understand what you're telling us if you're asking us to make informed decisions on the smart managed growth of the future of the, of the city.
But mind you, we do have a chance every week, like I do, to meet with the city manager, like I do every Monday, and then if we have any questions that we don't know, we could always ask for the person from that specific department to help us. And that's what I did yesterday specifically about the corridor on Whiteview. Yesterday after meeting with the city manager, I went back to that corridor, and I still don't see the need to reduce the lines over there, instead of keeping the two lines, and I stayed there for a while. One problem I find, and it's right here on one of the pictures that was sent in our pack, on our package for the things, it's those trees. Those trees, really, the way they are, they really curb the vision of those coming in. They really do, okay? You know which trees I'm talking about.
Yeah, and you, we have, actually, the next agenda item is dealing with the design of the Whiteview going east of US-1. This here is really looking at, Whiteview may be a connection to the west, and that is one of the reasons why we reevaluated and looked at keeping the four lanes on Whiteview, because this, Whiteview could be a potential connection as a major connector to the western development of the city.
So then I hope that next week when we discuss this, number five, and number seven, at least they will be discussed in some kind of a manner, so we don't put the horses, so we don't put the carriage in front of the horses, if you know what I mean. That's it, thank you.
Eddie, go, it's good.
I fully agree with what Eddie just said, totally.
I'd just say it's been a long, long journey to this point, and it's still going to be quite a while before.
before we get the public works, the facility that they deserve and we can finalize all of the actual construction and everything. But thank you for the update and thank you for all the work they've done.
Thank you.
Good, thank you Carl. Okay, are you, are you up next again?
No, we have um, our consultant here on board today with our traffic engineer is gonna come and present the next item to you.
So is this another resolution that you'll read in, please?
Yes, this is item number eight. The Whiteview Parkway Final Design Resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving a work order with England Thems and Miller, Inc. For engineering services for Whiteview Parkway Final Design. Authorizing the city manager or designated to execute necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, I'm Michael Grunewald, I'm traffic engineer with the City of Palm Coast. Uh, with me is Matt Majori, who is Representative of England Thems Miller. He's going to do majority of the presentation, I'm gonna give an introduction and I'm gonna finish at the end. So Whiteview Parkway is currently a project that's under design with the city. We completed a design in 2019 that we presented to the city council. It included Whiteview Parkway from, for the full extent. And it included a one-mile segment that's currently four lanes. That was proposed to be reduced down to a two-lane segment. City, in cit- 2021, the city council asked city engineering to go back and take a look. Was it possible to maintain that four-lane segment? And you provided monies for us to do a feasibility study. ETM has completed that feasibility study and confirmed, and that's what this presentation is going to largely entail. What that present, what that feasibility study shows is can we do a four, keep that four-lane segment as an option? Matt, would you continue with the presentation?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, council members, good to be with you today. Again, I'm Matt Majori with England Thems and Miller and glad to, to talk to you about your project today.
There you go, I apologize.
So today I'd like to talk a little bit about the limits of the project, the objectives that you had for our firm on the project. Some of the history, this project goes back a number of years. Talk about the currently proposed improvements that we have and then answer any questions you may have. So, so by way of history, the project limits are encompass all of Whiteview Parkway, from stem to stern, if you will. So starting at US1, three and a half miles to the east, Pritchard Drive. But the project's really broken into two pieces, as Mr. Grunewald mentioned. The first, just short of a mile, is the existing four-lane divided roadway section. So that has two 11-foot travel lanes in each direction. This slide, the bottom picture, shows the two eastbound lanes. And then you do have a, a grass median with landscaping. It's in a 120-foot right-of-way and there's currently no sidewalks or paths. So no provision really for pedestrians or cyclists at this point. And then the second larger piece of the project is the remaining roughly 2.7 miles and that's from White Mill down to Pritchard. Again, 120-foot right-of-way, this section is a two-lane undivided road, as you all probably know. And there is a 12-foot path that runs along the south side of the roadway, along the south side of the right-of-way. So for the project's objectives, the city's goals are really to enhance safety for vehicles, enhance vehi- uh, safety for pedestrians and cyclists, and then there's other minor enhancements that we'll talk about as well. So starting with vehicular safety, the TPO back in 2017 identified at least a portion of this project as one of the top 10 segments for crash severity. And this was in the, the vicinity of Wood Ash and the Rolling Sands, if you're familiar. So the project contemplates adding right and left turn lanes at various intersections and also to do intersection improvements throughout the corridor. Some of the big ones are restricting the median openings in that Woodbury area to reduce cut-through traffic. For pedestrians and cyclists, the, the project is part of the city's master plan for sidewalks. So it does include extending a path from White Mill westward to US1 to complete the path for the whole cor- for the remaining west, western part of the corridor. And then also provides for a small piece of path on the north side of the road from US1 to Wood Ash Lane. Other enhancements, um, to, to the vice mayor's point, the median landscape, landscaping will be reviewed both for site distance and also, also to look at trees that are impacting the pavement. There's, I believe live oaks is what they are in a lot of the area that are close to the road that impact the pavement. But the project will also include opportunities to enhance landscaping, not just deal with problematic landscaping. There'll also be signage improvements, the monument sign of US1 will be replaced with your, your, per your city standard. And then we're also going to add street lighting throughout the corridor that doesn't currently exist. So that'll be LED street lighting um, to light both the road and to enhance the path lighting. And then uh, the roadway will be resurfaced depending on the timing of the project, the city's analysis of the pavement condition and funding as well. And then I want to talk a little bit about the history of the project today. So we'll talk about some of the analysis that's been done previously. Uh, I'll give a quick review of the public participation to date that you all have done and then talk about the project status. So in 2017, the city undertook an analysis of the corridor and looked at three, three main issues. The traffic volume was reviewed, both current and future traffic protection, projections. The intersections were especially analyzed and crashes were reviewed and it was noted there were a significant number of right, uh, I'm sorry, significant number of rear-end crashes which led to the consensus that right and left turn lanes were needed. So at the end of that analysis that the city did, the recommendation at that point back in 2017 was to undertake a road diet, which is to reduce the four-lane section down to a two-lane divided section. And that would provide room to build a pedestrian path from White Mill back to US1. And the project was also to include turn lanes. And that was, those improvements would accommodate traffic through 2040 except at one intersection. And that solution was proposed because that was the most cost-effective way to implement the safety improvements that the city desired at that time. So the existing conditions, again, the, the left slide shows the four-lane divided road. So you see the two lanes and then the grass median on the left side of the photo. And then the right photo is a depiction of the road diet. So you would keep the inside eastbound and westbound lanes. And then that would provide room for a grass swale or separation between the road and the path. I'll give a quick review of the public participation to date. Back in 2017, those conceptual plans for the road diet were presented to a, a previous council. The city undertook a public meeting in January of 2018. And then in the middle of 2018, the concept for that road diet project and path improvement was approved by the city's beautification and environmental advisory committees. In August of 2018, the council approved the contract with my firm for the design plans for the project. And in 2019, we completed that design work with the exception of the landscaping, which the city intended to do it within house staff at that time. And then in the spring of 2019, the project was submitted to DOT or in TPO for funding. And then as Mr. Grunewald mentioned, in October of last year, I believe staff had a presentation to you, to the council, kind of an update. And the results of that, my understanding is that we were then engaged, our firm was engaged to relook at the project to determine the feasibility of building the path and the other improvements without undertaking the road diet. We, we did that work and subsequent to that work in February of this year, we had a public meeting in this room and talked about the results of that feasibility. Again, we talked about the objectives and the history and the proposed improvements. There was a, a rather lengthy Q and A session with the residents and my firm and, and staff. And included here just a brief synopsis of the comments from the residents. There were several folks that expressed concern with vehicular speeds. But we noted that was generally not on Whiteview, it was on the adjacent side roads connecting into Whiteview. At least one resident voiced concern with the inconsistency of speed limits. There's 45, 50 and 45 posted speed limits, I believe, out there. So we will look at that with staff in the final design phase. At least one resident, I'm sorry, several residents voiced their appreciation for the improvements of medians in, near the Woodbury Drive area to reduce that cut-through traffic. That was a big concern residents had. One or two residents spoke in favor of adding one additional right-turn lane, that was out of Pine Tree Drive. And the city staffer have actually collected traffic data that supports the adding that to the project. And then I would say overwhelmingly, the public spoke in favor of maintaining the four-lane roadway and not doing the previously contemplated road diet. As far as funding status on the TPO, the project's ranked number four and it's in the tentative DOT budget for fiscal year 2023. So uh, summary, where we are to date, the recommendation is to, is to extend the path as previously contemplated from White Mill back to US1. We're going to add turn lanes at 12 locations. We're going to restrict the median openings in the area of Woodbury Drive, which we'll review graphically here in a minute. We'll add some additional openings for U-turn movements to compensate for the medians we're closing. We're going to add that continuous street lighting that I mentioned along the corridor. And then roadway resurfacing will be reviewed as well depending on funding and the status of pavement out there. So this is a, a new graphic, if you will, showing the proposed improvements without the road diet. So this would be to keep the four-lane section. So on the left you see the existing conditions, the four-lane divided road and a grass swale between the road and the adjacent properties. And what we contemplate now is we would actually add a curb and gutter along that section of road. And the reason for that is to provide for the path, keeping the four lanes and not having room for a swale. So we'd have, at that point, have a piped storm drain system for that first eight tenths of a mile roughly with the four-lane divided roadway. I want to run through um, some of the improvements contemplated along the corridor at the intersections generally. And each of these slides will show on the left the existing condition and on the right the proposed condition. And I know it's rather small, so I'll, I'll verbally tell you what we're doing as well. The first one is Wood Ash Lane and that's an existing median opening and it's proposed to add a, an eastbound left-turn lane to Wood Ash Lane and then also a westbound U-turn lane for folks needing to make a U-turn. For Rolling Sands, in that area, you, you're probably familiar with the, the triple median opening in close proximity to each other. There, the project includes reducing it from three down to one directional median opening. So that would provide for a, a westbound left turn to Rolling Sands. And then from Rolling Sands, a, a westbound left turn onto a Whiteview. At the, the Palm Coast Bible Church, this is in addition to the project from previously, what was previously contemplated that provides both an eastbound and westbound left turn. At White Mill Drive, just an eastbound left turn lane on White Mill. But then the project will also include some widening work on White Mill itself to provide both a southbound left turn and a southbound right turn, where today there's only one lane, southbound. At Whipper Will, we'll be adding a eastbound left turn and a westbound right turn. Ravenwood Drive, similarly, we're adding a eastbound right turn and a westbound left turn. And at Princess Rose Drive, we're just adding an eastbound left turn from White Mill onto Princess Rose. We added this slide to explain or summarize the effects of retaining the four lanes. So this would be the effects of keeping the four lanes versus doing the previously contemplated road diet. And um, there, there's basically five general categories that are shown here. One is an increased construction cost. The second is that the path will be closer to the road than previously contemplated. We'll have slightly less open swale or less green space along the corridor. We reduced a number of turn lanes and to provide for the path. But on the plus side, obviously, there's no reduction in traffic capacity for this section of roadway. For added construction cost, I mentioned previously that curb and gutter that we would add to provide a collection of stormwater that's needed by taking out the existing swale. So we have about 1,900 feet of curb and gutter, we'll be adding about 3,200 feet of additional storm drain pipe. And if the resurfacing is, is undertaken, it would be 11,000 square feet of additional pavement resurfacing. And that's basically to resurface the lanes that we would have removed had you undertaken the road diet. And the, the effect of those three bullets is generally on the order of about half a million dollars of added construction cost. Recapping what we've already discussed, but the path would be closer to the road within the, the four-lane section. So the slide on the left is the, the older depiction with the road diet, a grassed swale, the separation between the path. And with the road diet, the path is, this graphic shows it, it's about five feet from the curb and gutter to the path. So still have a decent amount of separation. This is a typical section is what we call it, but it, this shows with the road diet, you'd have one basically eastbound travel lane. The swale would be located where the existing outside lane is today and then the path outboard or, or towards the right-of-way line. And then without the road diet, you, you keep the two eastbound lanes and westbound, but curb and gutter, four and a half feet from the back of curb to the path and then the, the path. There's basically three areas where the turn lanes were excluded or will be excluded by virtue of keeping the four-lane divided roadway. And um, all of these though are, are ameliorated, if you will, by certain conditions which I'll describe. So the first is Woodbury Drive, the, the westbound right turn lane, we would exclude. But that's no longer needed because now we have the four-lane roadway approaching Woodbury. The U-turn median opening east of Woodbury, we're eliminating that to provide a dedicated opening for a future fire station, which was deemed to be more important. And then on White, White Mill Drive, the, the westbound right turn lane, again, no, no longer needed because we're keeping the four-lane existing roadway.
So what we're looking at, asking for the council's direction is we now have two partially completed plans in-house. We have one for a section that includes our two-lane roadway diet. We have another section that includes maintaining the existing four-lane capacity for the approximately one-mile section of, from White Mill Drive to US1. We'd be looking for a resolution to uh, go with a, funding a design contract with ETM to complete one of those designs. Looking for, which, which does the council wish us to pursue? The two-lane road diet or the four-lane road diet? What we're looking at is, we have the expectation that in approximately July of this year, the FDO will be making a decision on awarding the construction, the construction monies for this project. And we need to have completed plans in hand in order to be eligible for that award.
So just a question, if I may. Um, the TPO has experienced, um, some of our regional partners in the TPO not able to hit their match. Which means that, what, what did you say our number was right now, number four? We're fourth in the queue?
We're fourth, we're fourth in the queue.
Yeah, so is there any possibility that we might, that might be accelerated and we might jump up because another municipality was unable to hit their fun, their match, that you're aware of? And the reason I ask is because this could, could conceivably happen sooner than we had anticipated. And the reason I ask is because this could conceivably happen sooner than we had anticipated.
And that, I'll answer that question. That is exactly what happened. We are currently in the tentative budget for the budget that will take effect July 1st, and Nether County was not ready with a project to move forward. So we kind of got jumped over, and our project is basically ready to move, to go. So that's why funding will be available this coming summer.
But you gotta have plans in hand to make it through the gauntlet, right? Okay. All right. Thank you.
And just to be clear, whether we go with the two-lane or the four-lane, we're going to need engineering work to complete the plans. Because even our two-lane plans need to be updated to meet FDOT's current specifications from when they were compared to when they were.
If I may, I would ask our longer-serving council members who have been through this project and a lot of discussion to give us their thoughts first, if that's okay with you?
Absolutely. I could tell you only that this has been knocked already twice. Council already knocked it twice. Twice he came to us and we knocked it. Knocked that, going from the four to two lanes. Okay? And, you know, what you said here today is very important, and I looked at it, and I've spent hours there, hours. Yesterday, after I left the meeting, I went to Rassford to see a friend, and went back there and see it again. And the cut-throughs, no doubt about it, it's the problem. But now, you mentioned one thing that I liked, traffic projections. You talking about cut-throughs? Let's go to Belt Air. Belt Air has more cut-throughs, and last week, we had one death there, just last week, because of those cut-throughs. That could be solved with a no-left-turn sign. Gotta go around. So cut-throughs on Belt Air, by numbers of traffic, are thousands of times more worse than the ones here in White View. I don't think that the way we're growing, the way we are growing, we need to shorten roads. Just keep them the way they are. I wish we could put three lanes, not reduce it to one. It's very simple. Cut-throughs, unless we're gonna do something just like this in Belt Air, which I don't think we will, okay? This makes no sense to me. It didn't make sense then, it still doesn't make sense now. And if any of my colleagues would do what I did, go there, sit for a couple of hours and look at these things, now there's a problem. Those trees, they do cut visibility, especially if you're speeding. Those trees do cut visibilities. I see no other danger other than carelessness, okay, of somebody being there. And if you go to Belt Air, you're talking about danger on those cut-throughs. Thank you.
Sure. Councilman?
Yeah, absolutely. I think I actually was surveying on the TPO in 2017 when this was going through. It is statistically one of the most dangerous portions of road in the greater Flagler-Volusia area. And I concur that it most definitely has to do with carelessness of drivers, but the reality is that it's the rear-end collisions that are occurring because of the lack of a turn lane for traffic to be able to get out of, you know, full-speed traffic. When we're coming right off US-1, it doesn't take much to anticipate that you're gonna be able to continue straight in a straight turning, in a straight lane that has a potential to turn, but you have cars that are coming to a complete stop essentially. And part of it has to do with the visibility from the other side. I would also argue that on Seminole Woods, we have an issue with those trees growing so large that it starts to become more of an impediment than a luxury. But yeah, I think the overwhelming public voice is that we need to keep these as four lanes instead of individual lanes with turn lanes. I appreciate the projections of the traffic that could potentially be navigating these roads in 2040. And I, in my opinion, I would trust the traffic experts that this is a solution that entails having dedicated turn lanes, but we are here to act, you know, on behalf of the people. And it is a certain, it's a certain type of way that I feel because we have conflicting efforts here. The four lanes aren't really necessary in traffic proportions, but the individual turn lanes could potentially save lives and definitely reduce traffic injuries. I think in the chart you had, I think 2016 had like twenty crashes or something like that. It's just a higher propensity of accidents occurring over a long period of time is just statistically significant, and it deserves to be, have attention paid to it. But I think that in this type of environment, we're probably best off trying to have, eliminate cut-throughs and try to come to a safer solution that doesn't include going to a two-lane and two-turning lane road diet. So that's my opinion. I've seen this come back and forth a couple of times. We had some council members come and go that didn't necessarily agree with the traffic analysis, but it has been consistently one of the most dangerous portions of road in the greater Flagler-Volusia County area for some time now, and the accident rate reflects that.
So just really, more questions, I think, or comments. Is it a valid comparison, Belt Air, in terms of the traffic count projected forward to the traffic counts that you showed here for White View?
If you looked at the slide that had the traffic counts, the projections for White View?
They're significantly different, right?
Significantly lower than what we see on Belt Air.
Significantly lower. So it's not, it's not the same number of cars or volume or anything else.
Capacity of the two-lane solution would more than be adequate for the projected traffic.
And number two, so going with the four lane would be at the expense of pedestrian or multi-use pathways, because I know TPO is focused on that. In other words, you wouldn't have the same ability for pedestrians and cyclists, or you would?
We would have the same ability for pedestrians and cyclists.
You'd be wide enough for both to share? Okay.
We have an opportunity for the pedestrian passage.
And I guess, because it's been a long presentation, a long day so far, the cost between the two options, what's the delta between the two, if there is one?
The delta was approximately a half a million dollars.
One or the other?
It's, it's in half a million dollars less for the roadway diet.
For the diet versus the, maybe the four lanes, so half a million bucks more for the other. Okay. Councilman Danko, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to, great job. I'm in favor of keeping the pavement, the four lanes. I think you've come up with a great solution for that. I realize we're gonna yank a lot of trees out of there. They do obstruct views. Have we thought about putting in some palm trees, like we have on Belt Air? I mean, we are in Palm Coast.
That is the plan. Our landscape would be consistent with some of our other arterias that we relandscaped, like Belt Air with the palm trees.
Excellent. We, we do need to deal with Belt Air at some point. I don't know how many of you saw the four-car pile-on crash this morning. I know it was a bit foggy, but you had four vehicles that just crunched into each other. I don't know if there were injuries or not, but it looked very serious.
I can speak to that.
Please.
Well, I'm sorry, let's, let's finish the topic at hand, and not that that's unimportant, but just so we don't mix the two.
Yeah, no, that's all I have on White View.
So staff is looking for some direction, and I, let me say this, I didn't say it before, I will also support what the other three council members have suggested, you know, based on their experience and Councilman Danko. So we would ask you to move forward with the, with the four-lane scenario. So that's clear to staff? Any questions, if you're looking for direction?
That's clear.
That's what you needed to know, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, now Councilman Danko with Belt Air.
Carl, you were gonna comment on the accident on Belt Air.
Yeah, now I'll comment on the Belt Air item specifically. The TPO also did a study on the Belt Air corridor, and we have designed many improvements along the Belt Air corridor, and we actually broke them up into three separate applications with the TPO. Those didn't score as high. I think it was mainly due to the crash severity and some other scoring factors that they use. I think our highest rated project is the number sixteen on the list. So they are in, we are seeking DOT funding to make improvements along the Belt Air corridor. So those are in the hopper. Those are designed and complete, ready to go to construction. We're just waiting on funding for those as well.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody set? Gentlemen, thank you for the presentation, I thought. Very well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our next item, if I'm not mistaken, we're at public participation. So I would invite any member of the public that would like to speak to anything that we have not already covered today. We have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Lydia Reden, and I have been, for lack of a better word, unofficially deputized to appear at the city council meeting today, for people who couldn't come, they're working or they have other obligations, to say expressly that we want Belt Air to be a priority in the city's strategic plan. And some of the city council members may know, because I copied you on an email, that we had a successful meeting with the mayor and community residents on March 3rd, 2022, which was about four days ago. I guess there were about seventy people. I sent out an email to them. They copied me on some of the emails, so you're shaking your head that you've gotten some of the emails. It's only been four days, but the city council has also received a petition of five hundred and sixty-two signatures to ask that the Frida Zamba pool be open, because it looks like the master plan was to close the facilities at Belt Air. So there was a petition. It's now up to five hundred and seventy-two, because at the meeting, there were ten more signatures added. So you have about approximately six hundred and forty residents who are asking that Belt Air slash Frida Zamba slash, we may need to set up a more, another new pool in three to five years, be put on the city's strategic plan. So that was my mission, so that everybody could see that I came here and I did what the mayor asked us to do, because he can't talk to the city council members. We, the people, have to do this. Also, one of the city council members has said that you've sort of been threatened, that there's an upcoming election and people won't vote for you. Well, I, or, you know, you're threatened with the upcoming election. It's really not an issue with Belt Air, because we, the people who pay for these projects, were not provided, with all due respect, and I regret to report, we were not provided with full, true, complete, and accurate information. So any decisions that the school board made are void by operation of law. And apparently, based on information and belief, there was a citizens group who asked for some information, and I'm just giving this as an example. Apparently, there's a bond on Belt Air, and for four years, they've been asking about the details of the bond. And you know, bond is just an IOU on which we pay principal and interest. And the school board has not been truthful and forthcoming on that information, other unanswered questions. So, mission accomplished.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. And city manager will maintain a regular meeting and communication with the superintendent of the district to talk about district versus city responsibilities. Thank you for your comment.
We're aware of that, and we know that there are upcoming dates, so I expect that there'll be phone calls, emails, and in-person, again, asking that the belt, the issues at Belt Air slash Frida Zamba slash, should there be another new pool open or sports facility should be part of the city's strategic plan.
Thank you for your comments today. Are there any members of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Please step forward.
Good morning. My name is Sims Jones, and I just want to comment on a few things that I heard this morning. And one of them is like about the fair housing. I heard that the numbers went down. But I want to know, are those numbers down because of people who had to leave our area? You know, COVID hit, a number of people became homeless, they're living in woods, people are living in cars, some people have left our area. Is the reason the numbers went down because of the fact that people had to leave our area, or they had, or they, like I said, living in cars or out in the woods? Another thing is the affordable housing, affordable housing. Who is actually building low-income housing here in Palm Coast? Or is there any affordable housing being built? And concerning the affordable housing incentive report, what is the percentage of people who were actually helped in the SHIP program? And what were the demographics of those people that were helped? Because I didn't actually hear numbers, and I know when, again, COVID hit, a lot of things went by the wayside. So who actually got helped? And what has happened with the funds if the money's just been sitting there and nobody's been helped? The town center, I was thinking about, why won't we do something like many other cities have done? And let's create a shuttle. It can be electric vehicles. It don't have to be big units. You know, something that go around through the town center area. This way, businesses can have places in the town center area, and we don't have to worry about large traffic problems if we have some type of shuttle that goes around and brings people around. It can also be a tourist thing, and, you know, something to beautify and highlight our area. So a simple little shuttle, like I said, electric vehicle, and that would help to facilitate people getting around in our town center area. And businesses can have access to people coming in there, buying, working, or whatever, because they have a way of getting around. And lastly, I see, you know, we talked about the west side of Palm Coast. I mean, the west, Matanzas extended a pathway. But the east side, I think we need help. It's two lanes, one going one way, one going the other way. It's connecting Old Kings Road, Matanz, Old Kings Road, I-95, Belt Air, and US-1. And that's a main road that really needs to be widened, because right now, we got another hospital coming over there, and the traffic is definitely going to improve. I apologize.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker?
Good morning. Greg Blasey, president and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. I've heard the moratorium threat more than one time from this dais, and it's time to speak out against this reckless idea. The chamber urges council members to oppose Councilman Brankino's moratorium. And I want to repeat what I heard the city attorney say, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I was typing fast. Your attorney, the legal professional hired by the city, advises against a moratorium, says that a moratorium exposes the city to liability, and that a moratorium can only occur if there is a health, safety, or welfare issue. So what's the issue? It's not health, safety, nor welfare. Our residents just told us they feel extremely safe in our community. The top line of the citizen survey report you discussed this morning on the highlights page says, quote, "Residents continue to experience a high quality of life." So what's the real issue? It isn't safety or quality of life. The word moratorium in my world is poisonous, and that's the world of the business community. And the chamber believes Councilman Brankino's moratorium is anti-property rights, anti-workforce housing, anti-business, and especially anti-construction, which accounts for a massive amount of our local jobs here in Flagler County. And I'm not quite sure why people in this community are hell-bent on killing one of our leading job creation industries, with the lawsuits against builders and developers when decisions don't go their way, with attacks from the dais as we saw here today. And trust me, business leaders notice. I fight to keep these businesses and builders and developers here. I'm the person they call after comments are made like they were today. And many already believe that Palm Coast is anti-business, and with the moratorium ideas, the latest example, can you really blame them? The city has a strategic initiative to promote being business-friendly, because the perception that we're not already exists. Businesses can't even get employees to live in our neighborhoods because it's so expensive and because of the lack of apartments and multifamily housing, and now you want to stop building them? I support working people. I support young people. I support young families, low-income residents, and the Brankino moratorium turns us back on those future residents. And let me tell you something, I grew up in apartment complexes, and I'm doing well now, but don't let the cufflinks and koolhans fool you. I grew up broke. And attacking and mischaracterizing who lives in multifamily housing is wrong. And the kicker of it all is that we're here talking about a moratorium on multifamily housing the same day we discuss affordable housing and the SHIP program, which fights to keep housing affordable for low-income families. It's almost unbelievable, except I was here to witness it. And what did the SHIP guy say? An ordinance impacting affordable housing needs to go through additional legal reviews on points he outlined. So I urge you, the Oakland Park, 2,000 residents, they had a housing needs study done that proved they had legal standing for a moratorium. We have none of that here. It's conjecture. It's dangerous. And I urge you next week, if it comes up, to vote against Councilman Brankino's moratorium.
Thank you for your comment. Are there? Are there any other members of the public that would like to address city council at this time?
I was very excited to hear the results of the citizen survey concerning the saltwater canals, with 80% of the respondents in favor of moving forward to get some prices and consulting on that issue. Very excited to hear that, considering I was one of the major people to bring it forward. I do have a couple of questions on the Green Lion issue, which was brought back up today. It's my understanding with the existing, the existing city costs, am I correct that the city staff is now negotiating with the Green Lion for a new lease to potentially separate the utilities and bring this more in line, so that what has happened in the past will be gone? That's a question I have. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining members of the public that would like to address city council at this time?
The city council or the...
I'm the public. Public addressing city council. Nope, seeing none, let me close public participation at this time, and we could move to discussion of city council matters that were not on the agenda today. Councilman, any items?
I just want to thank the head of our Chamber of Commerce for his comments, and I just want to assure you that I will never be in favor of moratoriums that block businesses, block jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Regarding Mr. Blasey, Mr. Blasey, I don't take one iota, one word of what I said in my comments about that. And even though I have to listen to what he said, I listen more to the residents of Palm Coast.
All right. No back and forth.
We could always sit down and discuss this.
Yes, you can.
If you, we could always sit down and discuss this. But that's just to let you know, and once again, I don't, oh, I don't fear. Now, in a good sense, in a good comments. A question was posed to me, and I, let me see if I could pronounce his name right. Is he the name Mr. Fino or Mr. Fido? One of the two. He asked me if it's safe to eat the fish that we fish over here in the canals. And I said, listen, I don't know, but I promise you, I'll bring that question up to the, and then I'll talk with Denise about that. Now, the other thing I saw here today that made me very, very proud, sometimes we don't realize who we're working with, who's here to help us. And here, let me give you the kudos. Commander Reynolds, I saw you do two things today that made me very proud. Twice, we had two handicapped people walking out of here, you got off your seat, went out there and opened the door for them. Thank you very much. And I noticed, don't let, don't think that I don't notice, but I noticed those things. I'm proud of you, sir. Thank you. That's it.
Good, thank you. And Councilman?
Just to piggyback, Commander Reynolds certainly, he was the fastest to get to the door. I saw other people standing up too, so I just want to give credit to the others, but he certainly was first to the door, so that was great to see. I, I would just, on a very serious note, like to extend my condolences to the Rizzo family and all residents of Flagler County and Palm Coast and our school system and everything that was impacted by the tremendous life and legacy of Joe Rizzo. So, yeah, it's a sad day for everybody in Flagler County. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. My comment, and the city manager has issued a statement which will go from, from the city of Palm Coast to the Flagler County Education Foundation. And I'd just like to read it into the record, I think it's important. "To the board and staff of the Flagler County Education Foundation and Flagler Schools, on behalf of the Palm Coast City Council and the city of Palm Coast, I would like to offer our sincere sympathies on the loss of your executive director, Joe Rizzo. Joe is a highly esteemed member of our community, and was always one of the first to offer his support and assistance to any event or initiative within the city or the community. We always knew that we could turn to Joe, and we would move mountains to help. He built the foundation for the success of numerous initiatives and for our future leaders. What an amazing legacy he leaves behind. Joe recently assisted us with the Innovation Challenge hosted by UNF, MedNexus, and the city of Palm Coast here at City Hall in November. Without hesitation, Joe offered any and all assistance to make his inaugural event a success. He personally delivered a staged trailer and additional essentials, so that the students competing in the challenge would feel valued and honored by being the focal point of the evening. He had a heart for the youth of Flagler County, and that impact will never be forgotten. Many of the city of Palm Coast knew Joe personally and professionally, and his heartbreaking loss is a testament to the kind of impact that Joe had on everyone he encountered. We at the city would like to offer our support during this difficult time. Again, please accept our sincerest condolences for your loss and share them with the Rizzo family. If the city can assist in any way, please let me know. Sincerely, Denise Bevan, Palm Coast City Manager." City Manager, thank you for that, we appreciate it very much. And now we will move to the city attorney for items not on the agenda. Do you have any comment?
No, I don't.
Then I will move finally, and importantly, to the city manager, who I know does have comments today.
I do, thank you, Mayor. I actually would like to welcome Chief Forte up for a update on our response and assistance to the Panhandle. Thank you, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Just to give you an idea, yesterday at 12 o'clock, we were asked to assemble a crew and deploy in three hours. And part of our response is, you come to work for one day, but you expect to stay for 14. So in three hours, through the work of the city, we sent one of the engines over to fleet, they did a performance measurement on it and cleaned it up, made sure that it was running great, checked the tires and oil-due filter, and got a truck ready. Finance updated some credit cards for deployment of crews, and at 3 o'clock, four of your firefighters headed up north with two members of the county and their tanker to meet up with St. Augustine, Marion County, and they moved into, I believe Clay County, and they moved up to Tallahassee, and they are on the front line right now, getting deployed to help fight fires. This is a significant event for us to go out of town. 22 years ago, we weren't, had that luxury. We had three engines to fight a 10,000-acre fire in this town, the scars of which are disappeared, the trees grew over, the charred remains are gone, and when you don't have somebody show up, it makes a world of difference, and we, as a department, swore that we will never let anybody have that feeling again, and when called, we will go. It's probably a five-day deployment, they should be back by Sunday or Monday, but please, in this time, keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and, and let's hope they do a great job and come back safe.
Chief, congratulations, and, and you have our prayers for the safety of your personnel, so that quick reaction is just unbelievable, so thank you again for being so well-prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Well, I think we've, I think we've reached the end of the journey today, so a motion to adjourn?
Done.
And second, thank you all.